For items that are not on the agenda. I don't have any cards. Do you have any cards, John?
I do not.
Okay, then I will close public comment number one and open up the meeting for item one, for the report of the fire chief. Carol?
Wow. That's as fast as we've gotten. It's as fast as we'll ever be. How about this, directors? If you have any questions on anything that's on there, we have to answer any questions regarding that. If not, I have just a couple announcements that are not in there. One that I shared with Director Crowley, which has some time sensitivity to it. So, we received a special district award unbeknownst to me that we even submitted, but apparently it's for the second year in a row. And it's at their summit, the Special District Summit West event that occurs in Anaheim on May 30th. So, I don't know if any of the directors are available to go to that Special District Summit West event, but they have an award for us and it's on a technology site, has to do with the drone program. If not, they can just send it to us, but I didn't know if any of you were planning to attend, or if this makes a difference in your wanting to attend. But there's a Special District Summit Meeting West that's being held at the Disney Paradise Pier Hotel, which at one point would have appealed to me, but I don't have a small child anymore, so, although I'm a fan of Disneyland, but it's in Anaheim. So, out of no, Director Crowley, if that coincides with your schooling program, I know you're down there sometimes, but I also know you're on vacation around that same time.
Yeah, unfortunately, I am not going to be able to make it. But I mean, anyone else who would like to go should just let Carol know.
Yeah, let me know, and if not, we'll just respond to them. And then I don't know if you had seen that East Palo Alto, Marie McKenzie, I know hit me up, and I hope you've hit all the directors up, but the ribbon cutting for East Palo Alto for the bicycle overpass is on May 18th from 10 to 12. It's a Saturday, and it's gonna be at the Gateway Shopping Center, which is where, you know, Home Depot is over there on East Bay Shore. So, that starts at 10 o'clock, and that's that head crossing across 101 that they've been, you know, working on for a, for a long time, so.
Any comments or questions for the chief?
Not on that particular item, but...
Okay, but I'll open it up for questions and comments in general.
No, the Facebook item on your, on your report. I looked at the Menlo staff report on that, and I was very disappointed not to see any mention of public safety in their discussion. You know, just a real quick review.
You're talking about Menlo Park City?
Yes. You know, the replacing, they proposed to replace a million square feet of light industrial, low-density development with 1,500 residential units, 200,000 square feet retail, a 250-room hotel, and 1.75 million square feet...
Oh, yeah.
...in high-density development. And again, I was very disappointed, no mention of public safety or infrastructure. I see that the city's inviting public comment. I don't know their timetable, their schedule, or what kind of schedule this is on, but I think, I would like to see the district pursue impact fees connected in connection with this project.
Yeah, and they have, you know, again, we have the impact fee scheduled. They just recently made a payment for building 22. And I will tell you this, they did come meet with us this time before they put this out publicly and scheduled the public meetings, and we shared with them, you know, I'll be honest, privately, some of the emergency service concerns that we had in regard to what we saw, of the proposals they had, which is the same one now that's public. There's a lot of different things that I think are better than the way they're proposing it in terms of security and safety, and, but there was also a lot of concern when John was in that meeting, you know, regarding our access to structures, where are they staging buses, because, you know, a lot of these things that we see as a threat or issues, they didn't necessarily have an answer for, but it's early. You know, who knows what the changes they're gonna do when it goes through the public process.
Because I was thinking more of the impact on the district in terms of facilities, personnel, equipment.
So, you know, Director, I'll just say this, you know, dealing with Facebook, kind of what I've learned over time is they change things so many times, looking at John. We've actually had complete reviews on plans that I kind of wait for it to go through the process, and then we get to what it's actually gonna be, then we go from there. But we've commented, at least on the front end of this one, on emergency response concerns that we have, knowing they're probably gonna change.
Well, what, what path would we follow if we wanted to pursue impact fees?
We already have those in place with them. We have a schedule with them, they know what it is, they're off the current impact fee process that we have. They're, they're on board. They signed an agreement for at least the other campus, correct me if I'm wrong, because Tim was involved with that pretty deeply, too.
So, is this an agreement with the district, or is the city imposing it?
That's with the district. Yeah, go ahead.
So, just briefly, so, for the prior developments at Facebook, they entered to agree with the fire district concerning impact fees for other financial contributions related to impact fees. So, for Willow, you know, depending on what the board direction would be, or what the board would want to do, we could engage a similar conversation with them to have an agreement that would cover that new campus. But right now, the prior agreements covered the old sun facility and then the new across the street, 2122, I guess.
Sorry, I'm a little confused. There is not an agreement on this proposed project?
That's correct. There's now existing agreement, so it would be a new, we need to be a new agreement with that with the boards.
So, just given your past experience with these projects, these Facebook projects, when would we anticipate approaching them and initiating the process?
When they, when they get down to essentially what they're gonna finally submit, and then typically when we get paid, like we saw in building 22, that they're currently in, in plans, when it hits fire prevention, that's when we would get a payment. But usually, we'll, we'll sit down with them when they finalize their process and get approval from the city and have a schedule where it's actually gonna happen. Because this thing's been going on with that campus, I would say, for several years. In fact, this is the second group of people that we've dealt with that are building a full campus plan. So, this isn't our first rodeo with them. This is the second time around where they've actually come up with a whole proposal, and the last company, I don't know what happened in that, but that's gone now. So, everything really did that first phase last time. Different company, different proposal, apparently different look at different time. So, you know, I'm gonna, it's kind of a wait and see. I don't know if there's gonna be version three, or version two's gonna fly, and then what version of version two finally makes it through the process. And we'll go through and do the same thing that we did last time, which is, and I have to say, you know, to Facebook's credit, you know, Facebook's actually been fairly easy, and I can say it was more cabinet, it wasn't so easy to start with, but it got easier as time went along, and they didn't see, when they saw us as a benefit to them, that we weren't just somebody else with our hand out. Early on, everybody had their hand out to Facebook. You know, the district provides essential services to them, so I think they get that there's a cost to that. And, you know, and when you mentioned the city, you know, part of the reason that we did a solo with Facebook was because the city was not representing our interests. The city was not gonna carve out any funding for, for the fire district, and so, you know, typically this stuff would be handled in a development agreement. Well, it's not. And, and so, we, we went at, we went at it on our own, and actually, our first group that we dealt with was Facebook, and it was not easy, and it was not pleasant, but we got there at some point, so.
And just briefly, the timing, they have to get an application to a point where the city can start environmental review, so they have like a set plan. So, we tried, like the chief said, like the first time is maybe a little later in the process. We moved it up each time, and so, I think it's more them settling on what their proposal is that they're getting.
Do we need to do any work to assess the impact, or can we not do that until we...
So, it's hard to do that until you know exactly what it is they're gonna do, and how many square feet and everything else that, you know, those formulas are based off of. And then, you know, like Tim just said, I mean, we've moved it up every time because I think what they liked was the assurance that that part is done. Because if you look at checkboxes or steps, and they know the fire district is one, it's, it's easy if you could go in there and figure out what it's gonna be, and then you move on to whatever, you know, the next 100 things are gonna be for them. I mean, we've actually, I think the last time, it was so easy, it was almost scary, because we got a formula, we had a process, you know, we went in and reaffirmed what it was gonna, what was gonna happen, and they did it. And then, as John, you know, just told me that he just paid us on, and Kathy took, what was 300,000 for building...
100,000.
Yeah, for building 22. Tim, thank you.
I wanna tell code on to what Jim was talking about, not about that project, but about a couple of other projects. It seems to me that, maybe not for Facebook, maybe, I mean, that sounds like, you know, there are people you can talk to, but there are two major things that are starting to go through the process now where the infrastructure, in my opinion, isn't there. One is, they're talking about adding another building at University Circle, and that's going through the approval process right now. It's, what, eight or 10 stories of those buildings? Which, there's issues of water and access and a whole bunch of things there. Then Woodland Park now is putting through a proposal that would, I think, triple the density of the housing, both going up higher and increasing the density. And I'm not sure, I, I, that, they may be in the O'Connor Water Tribe, I'm not sure which water they're served by there, but it seems to me that we shouldn't be waiting till the end on some of these things, because they involve infrastructure, and it's something that someone's gonna have to figure out.
Yeah, so, you know, I'll, I know John's not ready for this, because he's always ready for these questions, but typically, fire prevention sees it long before, you know, I hear about it, and if I hear about it first and he doesn't, you know, then I try and let him give him a heads up. But I don't know if he wants to say anything. We're aware of those and many, many, many more projects. So, what you're talking about is in the city of East Palo Alto, and that's a little bit different. I feel a little bit better as you get closer to the Palo Alto border, based upon the water in connects, and our desire for Palo Alto to assist East Palo Alto with some of its water. We still have concerns about infrastructure as you go deeper into the city. And, you know, I just was on the phone a week ago with a developer for the old Romic property, which, you know, has been beating with the city, and that's gonna go. I mean, they gotta clean up Bay Road first with the RV town that's down there, but, you know, nevertheless, there's a lot of development coming. Sobrato, I believe, has Amazon on the hook for another building right there where the Drew Medical Clinic is, University of Donahoe. So, I don't know if John, if you wanna say anything about all the stuff that's lining up, that's coming, but, yeah, we're aware of a bunch of those things.
So, that's part of the normal process. I'm actually very involved with the city in the planning aspect, so there's different phases in the planning that we're involved in, but all of the developers are required to actually meet with us. So, I've already met one-on-one with each of the different developers. We put their propositions that they actually understand, the infrastructure, what we would require for access, water, et cetera, so we can look at ways to improve or mitigate the issues that they have. And that's usually at a minimum of two years before they would ever look into submitting building plans, and then from there, it's usually another six months, two years before they even break the ground. So, for the most part, I'm gonna say we're usually two to three years before involved with these projects, before they are even hitting, you know, the papers or involved with the environmental impact of course and stuff. So, I've got, I've already met with all of these developers and already started those talks about what they're gonna need to go fly at a minimum.
Well, let me just add one more thing, because it involves two cities at least, maybe three with Palo Alto. But I live in the Willows, and there's, Woodland Avenue, which is our only access to our home, is virtually impassable from about 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock. There's talk now, which had been around before, kind of died down, but the talk is coming back about closing Woodland Avenue. If Woodland Avenue gets closed at the Menlo Park border, that's, that's a serious problem for access for the district.
Well, it's not the closing. So, Facebook's, you know, proposed to do some of the same things, and we've actually asked for gates, you know, about the train they're proposing. I mean, I did them up when they proposed the train. It's like, well, we're not stopping for the train, the train needs to stop for us. We have a station right on the railroad track. I mean, if you get in there early and you kind of assert dominance that emergency services are, you know, should preempt convenience of people traveling on a tram or a train, or closing a road and putting in some type of, you know, barrier that we can access, get access through, you know, then I think we're, we're more okay with it. Now, it's kind of bad for you, I mean, it's bad for the residents. You know, that's the whole thing. We don't get to tell these people what they need or wanna build, it's gotta go through the approval process, but once it gets approved, then we'll go in, as long as access and water supply for us are, you know, what we need it to be, then we have a limited sphere of control over them. And certainly, on the impact side, we're gonna, we're gonna assert, you know, that we need impact fees for what they're doing, because, you know, again, that's going, as you know, just to a special fund that's for, for facilities, apparatus, and equipment. It doesn't go for personnel costs, so, I mean, it's legitimate because it has a real impact. And I know Kathy's got a report on that tonight that shows, you know, where the money went, and how we applied it for the ladder truck off of some of the impact fees. So, that's a 10-year-old Gateway Mohannon, you know, project event that occurred, that finally, you know, we've actually, we're gonna pay ourselves back the money for buying, you know, an over 1.2 million dollar piece of equipment. It's longer than I wish it would've happened, and equally, if you go to the Menlo Park's last meeting, not lost on me is that the vegetation that, you know, we lost out to for Bayfront Park, which made no sense to put it in a dump with the arid environment, you know, that those bushes are now getting put on Chillicohe next to the school. So, I guess they repurposed it, you know, but that was essentially money we, we felt we were gonna get for a ladder truck, the vegetation in the dump or the park.
I'm glad you're on top of that, and that's why I wanted to signal that. We did talk at one point about the water and needing possibly to have a closed session item on that. I would just like to urge us to either proceed, either open or close, whatever's appropriate, to deal with the water situation.
Yeah, and John, John and I have been, you know, working on that. There's a new city manager in East Palo Alto, so I'd give it some time, but I mean, we've been, we've been talking to them about our concerns about infrastructure, what they wanna develop, and I'll share with all of you, you know, I told John, I think he's okay with it, too. If people are gonna put in water tanks, because we don't have enough water supply in the system, we have concerns, okay. We did it about IKEA and other buildings. I mean, at the end of the day, having, you know, 100,000 gallons of water on site, especially in an earthquake-prone area, that's on that side of the freeway, not that thing. You know, I mean, it kind of speaks to what's going on, but at the same time, if they're willing to pay for it, and that gives us a, you know, a durable water supply in case there's a fire or for other events, that's, you know, it's not my first preference, but if that's what it takes to make it so they can build it, all right. You know, but it speaks to the problems that were happening, and, you know, but it also solves problems that we have, so.
To the chair, would it be helpful for board members, maybe already, some already know, is it kind of, that relates to development timeline in terms of process? Because, you know, as Chief Johnson was talking about, there is a initial conversation that take place informally, then there's a formal process once designs and stuff have been looked at, and then there's another process where they come through the fire district for approval. So, you know, I, I don't know if that would be something helpful that, as a, as a chart that shows these critical points where, where the district would be involved in any, any development.
Yeah, I think that's a fair, that's a fair point, a fair analogy, and I would just offer, there's one more point that we've never seen before, and it's called the Facebook effect, and that's where they literally have plans and prevention, and they'll do a complete redo. Never seen that before. I mean, because of the cost of what that would be, going to a different design company, proposing a whole new set of plans, I mean, it's, you know, most people don't spend that kind of money, but, you know, based upon what they've been building, you know, they wanna get it right, and so, they don't have a problem blowing up anything and doing a change midway through the process.
I would say it depends on what we're looking for in process, because each city, town, county, already housing, pretty well-established process that goes to planning, and Fire District always gets to put our requirements in, the planning in several stages before it can even move past. And so, it has to go to public comment, et cetera, of which all the Fire District comments would be there for planning approvals with public comment. So, we usually will address those, so I would think most items would be addressed, but I'm open to hearing if there's something additional.
John, could you address how the EIR process fits into that? It's before, right?
Yeah, that all, that always requires to be able to obtain planning approval.
And would we comment on all the EIRs that are relevant, or where we have comments?
Yeah, that's a standard process, if, if it's necessary, any of the project even calls.
Well, in the case of water, of water supply, that seems like it wouldn't be an EIR, at least we should make it an EIR issue.
Yeah, there's, and so, we've done that. I mean, you know, access and water supply is kind of our, you know, it's our neck of the woods, it's where I think it's relevant for us. I mean, when I say access, you know, it's for ladders and different things, and, you know, carveouts where we can put out apparatus, but, you know, the other part that when we look at those two, sometimes, you know, with those EIRs comes their financial issues as well, and that's where many times they'll discount that there's any impact to the district financially. That's, that's one of the reasons that we kind of went in independently outside the city, because the cities really were involved with the development of some of those documents and making comments that there was no impact. Yet, you look at the sewer district, and it was like, well, there's gonna be an impact. You know, it's, oh, really? That's interesting. I mean, it's kind of funny, right? The sewer companies are having more impact than the fire district that responds to emergencies. But, you know, I think we dealt with some of that with the cities, and I think doing our own, doing our own thing, so to speak, has, has served us well. And if you remember, Greenheart and Stanford, we've done it, you know, in three different ways with three major developers so far that have put projects through, so, where we can be flexible on how we do it.
Just so you know, Chuck, you probably already know this, but the cities, every city has a, they know their load capacity in terms of water usage, and developers have to meet that particular standard. I almost lost a project because of that by, by, I don't know, by 100 gallons, but we were able to make up that through some other means, but that's part of the process that the city take the developers through, that we're looking at the water as a critical do, if, will the city have enough water to supply that project? And if it's not, then they don't get approved, so you stop right there.
Yeah, and I, and again, I would say to that, too, sometimes cities collect fees for different things, and I'm not trying to adjudicate them, but, you know, I think the district's been pretty transparent about what we collect fees for, where we put the money, and then what the money's for. You guys have done all that work to where, you know, everything matches up with, when something comes in, it goes in that impact fee account. We know what that can be used for tonight. Again, there's, there's an item on your, on your agenda for that, and, you know, I'm not always sure, you know, with other entities, when they collect the money, where it's going, and then, you know, later on, what happens to it, but that's, that's their issue, it's not ours, but I know ours is very well laid out.
Okay, moving on to, or, Harold, anything else?
No, that's it. I wanted to just point out one, I made a mistake, Director Burson caught it, which is on the dedication ceremony, community open house. So, on the Thursday, June 20th is the dedication ceremony. That's from 2:00 to 4:00, and then on Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00. Thank you. I, it was late when I was doing this. I put from 9:00 to 12:00, it's actually from 10:00 to 2:00, it's on the flyer, it was on the press release, I only screwed it up on the chief's report, so, catching that, but at the same time, that's in there, and I know Director Burson had a concern, that same day, there was a SIR event over at Fremont Park, and we're able to support both of those currently, they're on, both on the master calendar, and they're both in district six, so, you can literally go from one to the next one.
Thanks, Harold.
And you walk a distance, so.
Great, thanks. So, I'm gonna open this up to public hearings, to conduct a public hearing on the notice to destroy weeds, declaring weeds to be a public nuisance. John, you know, I don't think that...
Is there any public?
If you're gonna open a public hearing, you should do public comment and close the public hearing, and then we can hear from John.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any cards. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay, so, I'm gonna close public comment, and John?
And close the public hearing.
And public, close the hearing, too.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to item three, which is consider and approve a resolution authorizing the fire chief to undertake the removal of weeds and abatement of public nuisances following a public hearing on objections and protests. Sorry, John, that's...
So, I did meet one person who did show up. I addressed his concerns before being here, so he didn't need to speak, and I've been receiving public, plenty of phone calls and emails of people saying that they have already abated or will be working on it before June. So, before you is the resolution, so that we can perform our evaluation on June 1st and send out a contractor to abate anybody that's noncompliant.
Any discussion?
I'll move that we make the following resolution, the attached resolution.
Okay. If there's, we just, we consider an approval resolution authorizing the fire chief to undertake the removal of weeds and abatement of public nuisances following a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
I know that, we're on the consent calendar portion of the agenda, and I know that there were a couple of, of directors who wanted to take off the budget. If that's still the case, then this is the time to do that. Item seven, I think? Did you want to...
Yes, I'd like to pull it up.
Okay. Any, any other agenda item?
Yes.
I would like number nine, the, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I'd like to take off nine and 10 first.
Okay.
Nine and 10?
Yep, okay. So, item seven, nine, and 10 have been pulled, or will be pulled, so is there a motion to approve items four, five, six, and eight on the consent?
So, moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye?
Clark, you're downstairs.
I oppose, I, I...
What?
I oppose. Oppose.
You opposed approving the consent calendar?
No, I thought you said taking items off.
No, 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 to approve the items that were not taken off.
Okay, I approve.
Okay, so that passes with items seven, nine, and 10 pulled, so, let's go to item seven, which is approve the 2019, FY 2019-20 proposed budget and the full-time staffing level, full-time equivalent staffing level. Kathy?
Okay, so, in your packet on page three, you could start with the first table, kind of gives the overall of the proposed budget, it's a summary showing the general fund anticipated or estimated fund balance for July 1st of 2019, and then our estimated revenues, estimated expenditures, some transfers, and then you go to fund balance below, on the line below, to show what the beginning fund balance on 7/119 is anticipated to be, and what changes, a transfer out of the fund balance in the general fund. And then debt service has a fund balance of three, a little over 3 million for 7/119. We expect to get 237,000 from the government to offset interest fees, and expenditures are $1,1,210, and we're gonna be transferring from the general fund 950,000 to pay debt service. That will leave us with a fund balance of about 3.2 million at the end of fiscal year 1920. For capital improvements, we currently, well, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have 20.1 million. We have estimated expenditures of 3.157, and 3.5 transferred in from the general fund, leaving us at the end with estimated fund balance of 58.2 million. So, that's looking at the big picture. The, the table below, that, on the same page, has general fund fiscal activity, and it shows what we have estimated for property taxes for 1920 and other operating revenues. We anticipate expenditures, what that table shows is, it shows what the... We anticipate expenditures, what that table shows is it shows what the 17, 18 actual expenditures were or revenues. Also, the amended budgeted numbers for this current fiscal year, 18, 19, what the estimated ending numbers will be for this fiscal year, and then the 19, 20 proposed budget numbers. And that final column looks at the estimated actual for this current fiscal year versus the 19, 20 proposed, to show the difference. Any questions on that so far?
Jim?
No one? Okay, general fund revenues, we haven't broken down. On the next page, page 4 of the report, we have general fund property tax revenues. And again, in the same format, where you can see the actual amount for 17, 18, the amended budget 18, 19, the estimated actual for 18, 19, proposed budget 19, 20, and the difference between the two. What we did was increase property taxes by 4% was the estimate, estimate that the board had recommended. And the other ones were adjusted depending on what type they were, like 6% or, as you can see on the ERAF rebate, that went lower due to the way that the county is determining what the rebate is and also the shift. So down below that, we do talk about secured property taxes and secured, and talk about each category that's in that revenues, tax revenue section, and what they are and what they do. And, let's see. Next page, we have the other operating revenues budget summary, page 6, showing, same, same structure again, showing license and permits, current service charges, use of money in property, intergovernmental, and other revenues. The decrease in the intergovernmental has to do with the refunding, reimbursement for the CalOES deployment. So we're still, we'll be waiting for that at the end of this fiscal year, and that's why it shows as a lower, because we can't, we can't really budget it until we've done the deployment. So it's not usually in the budget. But that will be here at the end of this fiscal year, at the beginning of the next one. Next page has general fund expenditures. We go through wages and compensation, showing the salaries, stipends, overtime, retirement benefits, and then the extraordinary expenditure for CalPERS UAL payment. Again, we want to make a 3.5 minimum payment to CalPERS for our liability, actuarial liability. The next page, page 8, we go through each one of the categories, overtime, retirement, CalPERS UAL, to discuss what, what it does. And on page 9, operating, other operating expenditures, those materials and supplies, contract services, fixed assets, operating transfers out. And we end up with about a $6 million less expenditure planned for 19, 20 than 18, 19. A majority of that is due to transfers for the CIPs and also apparatus purchases, so fixed, fixed assets. On the next page, 10, we're showing what the transfers in are estimated for 19, 20 or that are proposed. $20 million into general fund, I'm sorry, $2 million into general fund and $250,000 out. So it's $2 million for, from the apparatus and equipment reserves. And then we're putting back $250,000 to those same reserves to start building funds to replace the new, new equipment that has come in over the last few years, couple of years. Below that, we have the transfers out. So the $950,100 is going to debt service to fund the debt service for that year. And also, we're transferring $3.5 million to the CIPs to help build that and start a couple of the projects. The next page talks about capital improvement projects. The proposed budget has, that we're gonna be beginning, so we've got a few projects coming up. Station 1 and 4, which I think we've talked about it at the recent board meetings. Station 1, we've still got some areas for nailing down what it's gonna be exactly. The station 4 is going, has been given to the architect, and that's what he did the presentation on the other night. Other improvements, we have, station 2 needs dry-ray ramps that have to match what the city these pavilators. And this latest projects on Almond Droll and the special operations warehouse. So Almond Droll was the addition of the ancillary building?
It's proposed still.
Proposed still. So that's budgeted. And the special operations warehouse is also, has an amount in the proposed budget that hasn't been approved by the board specifically for, for the project that may come, that will go to the board before that. But this is just putting funds there to be able to, to know we have it there. Those are the intended projects, and then they'll go to the board to get approval throughout the year. Any questions on CIPs?
We never, Jim pulled the item off, so did you have specific questions that you?
Well, I do. I don't know if you want to go, but Kathleen, go through her whole presentation.
Okay, sure. Okay, next we have debt service fund. The fund balance, oh, at the beginning of the year is $3 million, 3.027. We expect to get $212,000 from the, from the government to offset the interest and $1,500 from the funds that are sitting in the reserve at the fiscal agent. Expenditures, fees for the fiscal agent, $3,200. And principal payments for the COPAs and Bs are $295,000, and interest, $703,000. Total for that will be $1,100, $1,1210. We'll be doing transfers for the, for the total of $950,100. The debt service fund balance at the end of the year should be 3.2. And what the district has done since these first were issued was put aside annually an even amount that will pay off the debt service at equal payments. So that's why it's a little different than what the actual debt service payment is for that particular year and why there's a balance in the fund balance. Next, for the FTE listing, the request was specifically for three new positions in the battalion chief category. I'll let the chief discuss that if you have any questions. And other than that, I'm here to take questions.
Okay.
Yeah?
You know, I'll refer the sheet that was down a week ago in advance of the finance committee meeting, just on some comments that I had regarding the budget. The first one, wages and compensation. My concern is that we lump stipends, we lump a lot of different payments in that stipend category. When I see what is included, I see specialty pays, allowances, FLSA overtime, and stipend. It's hard for me to know, and I, I should ask, is there someplace where I can see how much is spent for each of these categories? Is that broken down?
Yes. Well, I don't know if it's broken down to depth, love in detail. Posted online, we have the proposed budget, you know, and it's.
If I wanted to know how much we spent on, you know, bilingual specialty pay, how would I, how would I know what we spent?
I guess you'd have to ask me a question. I have to provide that information. I don't have it in here.
Well, we, we don't collect it?
We do collect it, but it goes in.
I know we collect it, but we don't report it. We don't, we don't produce a report?
No.
My point in this is, I, it's, for each of these, I think the category is overly broad, given each of these is very different. You know, specialty pay or allowances typically for some skill that an employee has, and it's paid on a, just a flat rate.
And I think.
Versus like, you know, the battalion chief backfill stipend. That's contingent upon how many shifts that person worked. So where I'm going, why I think this should be valuable, and I'll use the battalion chief stipend as an example. My expectation would be, if, if we approve additional positions, I would expect to see that number go down over time. But if, if it's not collected, if it's not reported, I, I won't know. And it really, it's one of those things that it won't have much value in year 1 or in year 2. You know, you'll need two or three years worth of data to see what's my trend line? Is it, is it up, is it down? And I, I think the same thought applies to, to all of these different categories. When I see it just in a, in a lump sum like that, it just, I, I don't know what is generating that number. And it's a big number, I mean, $2.1 million for that single item, you know, 3% of their budget. That's significant. I, I would like to see, again, I don't know if this is something to refer to the finance committee, but this is similar to my issue with the, with overtime categories. If it's not broken down by the activity that generated the payment, it, it can't be tracked.
And can I respond first to your first part of that? In, in that, those categories were negotiated with the board and the IFF, for example, and priced estimated at that time? So I think because you weren't in that process, it's not, it sounds like a.
No, I, I appreciate that all of these have been approved. The payment, these different classifications have been approved. But we also granted spending authority that goes along with that. And fine, we have to estimate for budget purposes, but what, what was the actual? And if we're not collecting it and reporting it, I, I won't know.
For each category?
For each category, sure. You know, how, how much did we spend for, for any of these? You know, residencies, any of them?
I mean, it can be broken out. It just, that's more of an operational thing that people look at, like, say, commander, CHB.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna engage you in that, in that discussion. But I would like, I, I would propose that this be referred to the finance committee. And again, with, I find out the unit, and I don't know if my fellow directors do or not. And again, I point to this single battalion chief backfill stipend issue. You know, will it go down if we put in additional positions? I think it's incumbent upon us, if we're going to be prudent stewards of the public dollar, to know what is the impact of, of some of these decisions. I think this is a baseline metric that without it, we're kind of flying blind. It's a, I, I look at the dashboard, and there aren't a lot of metrics that, that tell me what are the impacts, what are the financial impacts of these, of these decisions, I believe.
And I think, again, one last comment for me, and then I'll be quiet, is that you could look at the program budget for suppression and see, you know, yeah, as a big category. You'll see any bumps, you know, they're higher, you'll be able to see.
But I won't know what is causing the bump.
That's correct.
And that's, that's my issue. That's my issue, because I, I won't know what's causing.
But you might not, but if there weren't bumps, which is what, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily expect bumps. But if they were, that's when you'd say.
If you're not measuring it, not evaluating it, you're not going to know. And, and I'm, I'm defining that as a problem. You know, I don't know if my fellow directors feel that way or not.
Chuck?
I just want to ask a clarifying question, Jim. We're looking at the budget right now, and, and I'm not sure from Kathy's answer about tracking, whether she was meaning she tracks it at the budget level to that degree? The other side of it is the accounting of what actually is spent. And I'm not sure if we're answer related. What are you asking? Are you asking about the accounting or the budgeting?
I'm being asked to sign off on a budget that includes $2.1 million for stipends, and I have no idea what's in that stipend. I have no idea what I'm loading on, what, what I'm approving. Because it's offered as a lump sum, and I don't know the component parts.
So you're speaking of the budget itself?
Right.
Okay. So, no, I just want to know, in the event this gets referred to the finance committee, I just want to be sure I understood what the question was. And as part of the budgeting, it seems to me, would be looking at the accounting and see what's actually historically being spent and so forth, whether that's a right answer or a wrong answer. And I don't even know if we have that debt. I don't know what that we have myself at this point.
So, question, Kathy, maybe help me out here. So we have this total 2.1 million, I think, if you want me to mention? If any of those categories, whatever the is in that category, I assume there's a spreadsheet somewhere generated that keeps track of those dollars.
That's correct.
And it, it, it's done itself down as it gets used, and you have categories in which it gets spent. Is that a fair statement? So, so when, I guess the chief get that report, name him off here a little bit, but I, I think if there's a rapid acceleration going on in terms of expenditures, I don't know if there's any alarms, you know, on your computer that say, hey, this is getting, going too low, too fast. And how does the chief get to know about that?
Every month, the program, first of all, it's broken out into programs, whatever, you know, if it's firefighters, then they'll be under fire suppression, what their stipends, you know, a total. And then administration, what their, each program has for stipends. Monthly, we put together a monthly budget report that we give to the, all the budget, the program managers, for them to look at the numbers. And I know Chief Long and Chief Stevens and. Chief Mark, they're all looking at, you know, their overtime, their, you know, outs of being, going along each month as far as are they spending what they thought they would.
Chief, is there, if I may reference to you, is there, is there a benchmark or percent or, you know, $2 or $3 that go over that? Is there, is that, are there alarms that go off in your head in terms of when it gets to a certain point?
Oh, sure. And so, you know, what Kathy's bringing up is at the division level and at the, you know, the battalion level to some extent on program management, specifically at the division level, at the deputy level, that's where that's being managed. Chief Long's not here tonight, and I would say even in the fire marshal's office, they're managing their division. So I feel what everybody's looking at is what percentage of budget do you still have left? Right? I mean, so, you know, and, and when we look at program or even project-related or budget-related fees for the next year, you know, and Kathy and I have these discussions, discussions at the end, which is, and I have it with Chief Long, if somebody comes in and says, I need X, and it's gonna cost double of what it was last year, let's say it's overtime or anything like that, so what's the justification for that? Because if we look at trend line is below, then why would we do that? So when I look at staffing, one thing I think that's a little bit of a misnomer maybe here because I'm hearing it, if we add three battalion chiefs, the cost doesn't go down, it goes up. The number of occurrences for vacancies or stipends is gonna go up because we added three more people. Those are three more people that are gonna take vacations. Those are three more people that could be deployed out at some point. So, you know, you gotta be careful of thinking that somehow three more of something reduces it, it increases it. But as I've said to you, to the board members, I mean, we're looking at reducing division level, who equally take vacation, who equally get deployed out, and who cost more. And we know, as it says in here, that one of them is coming up in July. You're gonna lose a division chief. And that's gonna be the trend in the next several years. We're gonna lose most of the senior staff. So that's why I'm proposing to add battalions through the reduction of divisions. And I can't give you a fixed schedule for all of that, but that's gonna happen. So, but to go back to specific. So, but to go back specifically to your question, Chief Long specifically tracks all the overtime and looks at all those trends to make sure that we're not going over. If we're under, we're fine. And so, we try and project, we look at the next year, we're projecting based upon the year that we had, within reason. You know, we might get, like the last two years, nobody could have projected more deployments on the wildland fireside and equally on the USAR side. That hasn't happened in a long time. So, you know, we've tried to norm some of that as well. And, you know, down at the firefighter, let's say on the line level, we're paying firefighters overtime. You know, what drives that up is if we put somebody who goes out on workers' comp, which is unpredictable, right? How long they're going to be gone. And then equally, if we have, we're down, which we were at one point in the 70s on staffing, you know, how many units are we trying to staff? We've added two units in the last several years. So, even bringing us up to 100 personnel, you know, and then within negotiations adding another annual leave spot, you know, is something that we're watching because we're dealing with another anomaly now where we have a fixed number. We've kind of gone to what I know Director Bernstein proposed a few years ago to actual, which means that that's the actual number of people that we try to get to versus what we were doing, which was a number and a budget that we were trying to achieve. Let's say it was 100, but we're down in the 70s. I mean, he pointed out, I think it was a fair point, that we were not staffing to a level that we were budgeting to.
Last question along the same line. I think this probably get to, hopefully, maybe Chief Sodra. The reports that you get from your staff is generated from Kathy. Is that correct about this particular line item or coffin?
Well, and payroll, because I think Director McLaughlin asked the question, how would you know how many people get a stipend for bilingual pay? We know what that is because we have to pay those individuals, so we know everybody who has it, right? So, every category is checked somewhere, and we know there's a list, how many, and we keep track of those things.
So, but you receive these reports, right? My question, real question, is that how would it be any extra imposition on your part to provide that when this generated quarterly or monthly, whatever, Jim?
The backup document, essentially.
To provide that same document, Xerox said, and give it to the finance committee?
We can do that. I mean, I don't see why that's a problem to do it. I mean, you know, again, these are, there's variables. I think my only concern would be is we don't deal in a world, I mean, you know, if we're trying to make things a certain world, that doesn't exist and it's dynamic, right? Because we don't know if we're going to get a deployment, we don't know, you know, again, if somebody goes on workers' comp, so watching trend lines, looking at percentage of budgets, really what we do? And I ask a lot of questions too, because, you know, at the end of the year, when I come to you for more people or staffing, those are all things, I have no control over a number of different things, right? So, let's say in one year, and this has happened to us, we got eight to 10 people out on workers' comp. We're getting ravaged in overtime. And then what you don't see is we're forcing people to work because we don't have enough bodies, right? And we're sending people out on fires, and we're sending them out on deployments. So, it means every day, somebody's going to have to stay at work, not because they want to, but because they have to. So, that doesn't, you know, that isn't a comfortable thing. So, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, those are situations we get into that we don't like. But, you know, those are things that we try and keep control over as best we can, right? I mean, that's why I'm a big fan of staffing, and I know people don't like to hear it. The firefighters don't like it sometimes either. But overstaffing, quote unquote, isn't necessarily a bad thing either. Because then when you get hit with the workers' comp, you get hit with the deployments, you get hit with all these different things, you can still function comfortably. But we were down in the 70s and having to have people, you know, mandatory all the time and scramble to hire member. Even, you know, one of the things you're not seeing is we've hired over 40 people in five years. Okay, we've got 100 people on the line. So, we're almost at 50% within five years. And what that does, as the training division will tell you, is that's a ton of work for everybody. And in there, when you do that too, you have your older personnel teaching younger people, you're going to get more workers' comp injuries because they're pulling hose all the time, they're doing ladder work all the time. So, all this drill and training activity is going. And as soon as they get up probation, they want to become drivers. As soon as they get up probation, they see they can get a stipend if they learn Spanish, right? So, they're going to go do those, and that's a benefit to us. So, you know, again, controlling some of these things, understanding what they are, which is what I'm hearing, just understand it's dynamic. And to try and put it within some comfortable box, I get that makes sense within a budget configuration. Because Kathy, I think, is trying to explain why we project. But, you know, we project as best we can with kind of an uncertainty in mind, right? That's just, you know, I wish I could tell you it's cleaner than that, but that's how it works.
Yeah?
But that's one of the things that we would evaluate, your projection against actual, and then track it over time to see, are your projections, are you good at projecting that? Are they coming in near the actuals? And I appreciate, some of these are very dynamic.
Yeah, very dynamic.
They're tied to, remember, shifts work, hours work, et cetera. But many of these are not. They're fixed.
Well, if you knew, again, like you said, how many people get paid by the middle pay? Payroll can tell you that today.
They're fixed. And, you know, we come into a budget crunch and we have to start cutting things. Well, we start looking, how much are we spending there? Is that a category that we wanted to save some money on? So, if we're not measuring it, not, we're measuring it, if we're not reporting it or tracking it, then it's lost to us.
I think it's tracked, but it's like we don't...
Reported.
Yeah, I think it's tracked, it's just not...
Tracked and reported.
Well, it's reported, but it's not given to us.
Right, it's just not given to us, right.
I mean, it's accessible and available, so...
It's not even, you know, I don't even see it all the time because, again, it's the deputy chief's job. He's tracking the day-to-day work that's going on. And like I said, I mean, I look more on a quarterly basis. And then what it really look is when we get notices that we're over, right? So, if you allotted us, you know, a million dollars in overtime, and all of a sudden we hit that million dollars by the time we get to September, you know, what's driving that, right? Is that we all of a sudden got hit with, again, 10 people on workers' comp, three people retired, and we weren't planning on that? Because that's another one too that could hit you, is that people just leave. You know, when we weren't, when people weren't as happy around here because we didn't have a contract, they left with a week's notice. And, you know, and they did it at a time where we had just hired. So, now we're going to wait and cycle a hire again in a year. Well, that means we're carrying somebody on the books for a year that isn't, doesn't exist, which then is called overtime.
So, just to be clear, I'm thinking on a quarterly, semi-annual, annual basis. I have no interest in...
Daily.
In monthly or daily or anything less, even semi-annual, so that it could be evaluated over time. So that when we're here at budget time, we can ask, "Chief, tell us about, why are we ever in this category? You projected this amount, the actual came in at this, what accounts for that?" And then we can evaluate, you know, is that reasonable? Does that represent a reasonable outcome? So...
Kathy, I just, well, you know, I'm just trying to figure out if this is something we want to move to the finance committee or is this something that Kathy can just provide us? You know, because she has the information. So, what would you want out of the finance committee? I don't want to add...
I leave it to your discretion. I'll leave it to the chair's discretion if it's something that can be done now, but great.
Well...
I think there's simple fix it. It seem like the report's already generated since the chief, it's on Excel spreadsheet, I assume, so you can collapse it into three months or have it three months. It's already there. It's just a matter of providing the finance committee...
Well, I know the board.
Well, I think everything should filter through the committee. Committee do this, whatever is due diligence. And then if anything surfaced is made to concern, then it comes to board. That's what the committees are for, is to...
Yeah, but I mean, I feel like if Jim wants to see it, and the board should see it, then it should just come straight to the board. And if there's something that needs to be done once we've seen whatever the information, then it can be kicked back to the finance committee. Chuck?
Well, I was going to suggest that we have a discussion of this at the finance committee. I have an organization that's roughly the same size as the fire district. And we have lots of information, but it's not just on some report where, you know, it's a spreadsheet and you just look at it. You'd have to go in, open up the book, and find that piece there and this piece over here. And eventually, you know, it could be even time-consuming. I think you ought to evaluate how hard it is to assemble it, what kind of level. Because the numbers are there. The question is, what do you have to do to really get them in some visual format that you can review? And I think that should be a discussion at the finance committee.
What are you trying to say, Chuck?
Not what Chuck just said. I'm just saying, the reports, the numbers are already there. It's just a matter of providing to the finance committee because that's where the request is. And the board put a lot of confidence in the finance committee or any committee to prioritize and assess what's going on for the board. Because it can be a needy fix. And then if the finance committee sees something that's totally, you know, I don't want to use the word suspicious, but maybe out of whack, then that's when it comes to board. Other than that, it's business as usual.
And I wanted to add one thing as well. We have on our website, OpenGov, I think I've discussed it a little bit. And it'll drill down to the level you're talking about.
But I don't want to have to do that. I would like to report.
Okay, so that brings up the topic of, is for board members and for citizens to be able to look at whatever they want related to budget? If it's not used, we should stop spending the time on that and spend it on preparation of these reports for you or whatever it is, information you want. Stop paying for the software.
It seems to me about a 15-minute discussion at the committee level, we could find out how difficult it is and just assess that.
Then let's just take it to, just put it on the finance...
Can I add one thing to that that could go to that committee? So, one of the things that we did move to is actual. And what's never been studied is when we moved from, you know, as I just mentioned, overstaffing.
Yeah.
You know, when we moved to the model of actual, it creates a different set of problems. Which is if you're running at a number, you've added more rid, you know, and then you have workers' comp and all these things, you're going to generate bigger overtime numbers. So, in the past, that was somewhat absorbed because you had this quote-unquote overstaffing number, right? So, we used to plan for three people being on vacation every day and a workers' comp. Well, because we're running actual, we don't plan on that because we can't predict that, right? People can take a day and say, I'm going on vacation, they cancel it. That happens all the time because they can get paid out for their annual leave, so their circumstances may change. So, in an actual world, it's by the actual body that you have, it's by actually what's going on. I mean, so there is something what Director McLaughlin's saying, at least that that concept. The concept of actual versus the way we used to run the budget, they had a buffer in it. There is no buffer anymore. So, I mean, at least as a concept, that's probably worth discussing because then you're going to get into, do you want an overstaffing model or an actual model?
Then we'll put it into the finance committee.
Because on actual, your overtimes are going to go up.
So, Michelle, can you put that in there, that it'll be on next month's finance committee meeting agenda?
Yeah.
Any other questions on...
Discussion on reporting of overtime.
Was it that or wasn't it?
Report.
Discussion on, maybe, the stipends.
Stipends, okay. And the breakdown of the stipend, essentially, utilization of that, accurate.
I thought it was, I thought the reports, is that what you started with, Jim? You wanted the information, right? The actual information, which is generated from the report.
Right, and then Chuck was saying, let's see how complicated...
Right, the best way to figure it out.
Yeah. The what? And you wanted to see how complicated it might be to get all of that.
Yeah, just, I mean, nothing to do it here, we can find out.
So, it's really about just, it's the report on stipends and what that will look like, how, what kind of information is there that could be or shouldn't be dispersed to the board for easy access? I mean, it's not that, it's not available, it's available, it's just easy access, right? What did you hear? Okay, and do you have anything on the budget?
I do.
Okay?
I wasn't done.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I think this should be a good time to address the battalion chief increase. Is this the only place that this appears in our agenda tonight?
Well, yeah, this is, yeah, go on here, okay.
Yeah, this is put in there, you know, as I mentioned, and I know...
I haven't raised my issue.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
The, you know, this is a significant increase. And, you know, from your comments, would this go to two battalion chiefs working at any given time rather than one?
Right.
Yeah, that was different than my understanding. That's on me. This, you know, you mentioned some of the possible changes at your upper ranks. I think this, I don't know that we can view this in isolation, going from three to six, without considering the ripple effect upwards. I need more information. I need to know how, what is the impact on the assistant chief positions and the others before I can really make a reasonable judgment on this.
So, all this is doing though, just so you know, those proposals still have to come to you, but we only get one shot at changing really the budget right at the front end. So, you know, again, the board still has to approve when this happens that those changes would occur. I'm not just going to go out tomorrow and say...
So, this is budget authority. This is granting budget authority.
Yeah, in terms of the overall concept, the changes, which, you know, I've shared with some of you what's coming, that still has to be given to you as the board, and I want to make sure you're comfortable with it because it's the direction of the division. So, you know, all I'm asking for here is, let's include it in the budget, but we're not done. That just says, we're leading this here, almost like a placeholder, right?
This is a proposed, we're going to, this is not the final, at all.
Again, budget authority.
And there's a whole public hearing on the budget too, so, so we're at the beginning. Chuck?
Well, I have the same concern, and I just really want to voice it here. First of all, I support the idea of some sort of transitional plan to train people up to move into different roles. So, I'm supportive of that. I think the way we're showing it here is just by virtue of what we're looking at, we're authorizing a headcount addition of three, and I don't think that's what we're doing. Furthermore, if I look at the title of this item, item number seven, it says, "Approve FY 2019-20 proposed budget and the full-time equivalent staffing level." So, this is the authorization to approve the level. I mean, that's how it's stated. That may not be the purpose, but that's how it's stated.
I agree with you on that. It's not very clear.
There was an error on that. We're not asking you to vote on anything tonight for this. We don't want you to approve anything. We just want you to have the discussion that you're having, and so that was an error.
This is a, it's a major error. I mean, it's like saying, oh, it's 100 million.
So, I'm just clarifying now. That's what I'm asking you to do.
Okay, okay.
Okay, change, Michelle.
So, this is going to be revised, you're saying?
No, not unless it's being requested to be revised, right?
Well, I think...
If there's changes that we talked about, that you vote on, if you want to see, we do that. We go to the finance committee again, and then we come for approval in June, both of those things.
If this is just, if this, from my perspective, if this is just budget authority, I think we still have the task before us, the whole succession planning task before us.
That's correct.
I think this plays into that, and I appreciate you need the budget authority. So, if that is the election to create these additional positions, then the dollars have been added.
Yeah, we would, like I said, we would put a notice out tomorrow, which we would, I wouldn't do that to you. But this is, you know, as you know, it's significant enough because of what we have going on, right? We have people who are going to be leaving. So, you know, that is, I understand it's a future discussion. We're just not there yet. You know, we need more time to have that discussion, but we're only preparing the budget once. Outside of the menu review, this is kind of it. So, you know, if you want to blame anybody, blame me because I asked Kathy, please put this in here because I see this coming down the tracks. We're just not there yet.
Can I, I'm clear on what you're saying. Are we budgeting for transitional plan or are we budgeting for three, four, additional, full-year additional staff?
Well, not full year because, again, by the time we have a testing process, we put people in there, we go through some attrition that's going to occur within the next six months as well. You know, there's a lot of different things that are going to be happening, so...
So, if you ask another way though, because this is really important to me. Are we budgeting for the attrition that we're expecting here? In other words, are we doing the subtractions? In other words, are we doing the subtractions?
No.
Well, I think we need to do the subtraction.
Well, you're going to have, the answer is partially, because when you have a vacancy by Chief that again, everybody announced that we have one Division Chief leaving, we're not replacing them right away.
And so is that compensation taken out of this budget?
Well, it has to be because it's not going to...
She Kevin just said no.
Well, it's not going to anybody else, so it's going to be at the end of the year or mid-year, you're going to see that, see it as it's costing less.
Well, I'd like to request that you actually do an actual budget for what you think's going to happen, the adds and the subtracts for the year.
The, the problem with that is, on other people that we believe will retire, we don't know exactly what their day is. On some, we do.
Is it, is it fair to say that Chief, as you look at it, that there's going to be a structural change within the organization over the next couple of years? Structurally, you mean staffing structure?
Yes.
Well, but then more importantly, Chief, the management structure.
Well, I, I think the, okay, management structure. So if that's, if that's the case, and I think that's where these numbers are kind of lending itself to, in terms of focusing on that, that, that organize, that manage, management structure of change. And maybe, I don't know, if, if maybe that's a conversation that need to be had with the Board members about what that structural change is going to look like, maybe that may help in terms of building the numbers or looking at the FTEs in, in that respect.
So let me, let me tell you how, how it works, and then I alluded earlier that, you know, again, people can leave at any time they want, just give you, you know, no notice, right? So, but mostly with PERS, it's about a 90-day window when, when, if people want to tell you they've gone and they've got their calculations done, they know their day most will go within the end of a calendar year. And so we know we have within this next six-month window, one if not more Chief Officers who are going to be leaving. We know probably next year, we're going to have more than that yet again, maybe another two. So I mean, but I can't tell you with certainty, outside of again, one or two, when others will go. They don't even know sometimes because they're working with PERS on, through that 90-day calendar. So I mean, I'm kind of, I don't want to tell you conclusively anything because I don't know it until somebody says or actually believes what's going on. But I mean, at least at the Chief Officer level, people are a little bit more inclined because they deal with a lot of staff, that they understand planning is a big deal, that, you know, this, these transition changes that we're trying to, to do, and actually have given that as a project to the Deputy Chief and Division Chiefs in terms of workload and distribution, what would it look like? So they themselves understand that, you know, where we're going as a group and are in support of some of that. Maybe not all of it, specifically at the Battalion Chief level, there's some concern and trepidation about what it would look like because we're adding another position. So what does that mean, right? And so we're working through that as well. But, but I think specific to the budget and adding three positions in here, you know, to make, I don't know if it'll make Director McLaughlin feel more comfortable, but you know, I will let you know that, yeah, we're going to end up with a savings because other positions will not, no longer be filled. And yes, some of that will have to go to other people, but I doubt that we're going to hire a bunch of staff to do that. We're going to just spread some of that workload out within the group that we have. And it's going to become a point where that is undoable too, so we have to make some moves in here, but a little temporary.
Well, let me say, according to what, when I'm looking at the budget, it's suggesting that we're going to spend a million dollars this year less than we thought we were going to on salaries. So we're not really talking about, you know, coming up to the level. It just seems to me that if we know, for example, if, if somebody's going to retire in July, that's the beginning of this fiscal year, why not just take that money out? I, I, I just feel uncomfortable putting money in for things that we know won't be there. That's why we create splash funds and things that still are bad management tools.
We've had people who've actually pulled their papers at the last moment. And again, the 90-day window is pretty certain, but we've actually had people that have pulled it and said, I'm not leaving.
But 90 days would still only be a couple hundred thou, in other words, we've got enough room, put in a million dollars extra if you, I don't care. It just seems to me, nobody's trying to tie your hands. It just seems we shouldn't be budgeting for things that we know are not going to happen. And all of these employees you're talking about are, you have a say about it. They don't decide if they're working for us. You decide if they're working for us. And so you can put in a plan that you think is going to happen, and if it turns out, I pledge to you that if it turns out that you need an extra half million dollars for some surprise things, I will vote yes to do that. I mean, no, there's no tying hands here. I just think building budgets that are built on people we know aren't going to be there just is a fantasy that's, it makes me feel uncomfortable having that. I think this should be as accurate as you think it can be.
Well, I'll let Kathy speak because I know that, again, that gets into the reality of actually doing, doing the budget, but, you know, we know, we know some will go, they say, but nothing's certain until the day they leave.
And what if they change it?
That's happened.
And that's happened. I'm proud it happened.
Whoops, you went out of the money, but you got it.
Right. Now, and if certainly changes are mine, it's not like I'm saying, we need you out of here.
Y'all are the ones we don't want. We need to go long. It's good, this is going to be a long meeting.
Let me say, for the, for the taxpayers here, if we hired three new Battalion Chiefs and people decide to stay, what do we need all these people for? How is that fair to our taxpayers?
But that won't, but that won't happen.
Well, if it won't happen, then don't budget for it.
Go ahead, Robert.
No, I'm done. I think we have to be...
I, I was going to move on to my next topic, but we're...
Yeah, go ahead.
The capital improvement budget on page 11. You know, this wasn't at all apparent while I asked the question. There's 2.7 million budgeted for construction. 2.1 million of that, the lion's share, is for structural, structural improvements at the warehouse.
It wasn't, yeah, there, I think there was, my understanding of that was there were, there were...
But that's on my issue. My, my issue is with the, the, budgeting money for construction at the warehouse is my, is my issue, my concern. I have a lot of reservations about doing any construction at that site until we are fully informed on the, on the toxic issues on that site. Until, until we know the consequences of, if we start disturbing soil, if we start exposing soil, what does that mean for us? I still have the question, whose liability is the cleanup? Is it ours? Is it the generators? I don't know if that's been examined generally.
So I know legal counsel looked at that, we purchased the property and, you know, I don't know if we want to go up to that.
Well, I mean, Harold, let me get tagged on to what Jim is saying, because that was actually in one of our Board packets where there was, it was in the recitals. And there was a whole thing that I think that Tim was supposed to look into, I think, about the, it was the consent decree and the liabilities about the, I guess, the top part of the soil, the soil part of the property. Where it was, it was almost contradictory to what we were asked to vote on, right? If I remember correctly.
I don't know who's brought it over to our property. It's the, it's the side of the... But I know you guys looked at it, dropped the property.
Okay. Let me see if I can...
I don't have it. I think this was last month of year, it was probably last month.
Yeah, let me just say, because I understand what Director McLaughlin's saying. This is no different than when we made the last modifications to the front of the building. We talked about the security aspects of that. So, you know, we're not planning to move forward with any of these modifications currently until, you know, you get some answers on that. And then, you know, if we don't want to disturb the soil, I certainly understand that, there's also...
Well, not even that, Harold. It's like, what we were asked to vote on, if I remember correctly, was contradictory to what was actually in the recital that I was supposed to sign. And that was the problem I think this Board had. And so if I, I think that's what, what the problem was.
Controversial.
It was about the cleanup and then who was liable if it didn't get cleaned up.
This was in regards to the parking lot?
Yeah. That's the parking lot. Yeah, but, but, but it was...
My comments are specific to, to our property.
But that was part of that.
Right. But they're, they're, you know, they're contiguous, these exist at both sites.
But I mean, the point is, we didn't even get, I don't think we got our answer to that.
It's not, she's talking about...
No, I, I know what I'm talking about, but the, I mean, I, it's, your idea was probably the neighboring, it was the parking lot issue, but what we were asked to vote on was, we had a question about that one part of the recital. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I like to have it with me.
That was, okay. If, if I'm major perspective, if it was on the last regular media agenda, it was about parking lot on the neighboring property? And I'm not arguing the point about contamination, but just to clarify, it wasn't on the property you owned. And that item didn't come back to you because of the concerns with how to address the issue on the neighboring property.
But I think the liability being incurred.
So Director McLaughlin's...
Yes, sorry, Jim. Help me remember this.
Our property was not pre disturbed.
We had a talk, we talked...
The 2.1 that's in the budget is, is being, being placed there because that's what we've looked at and what we would want to do. We have to come back to the Board to request those things.
And I'm, but I'm saying, because again, when I asked my question, I was a little surprised to learn that, you know, we've already hired structural engineers and done some design work and whatnot. I, I don't want to spend any more money on that site until the Board has clarity on, on the toxic contamination issue. What are we facing? What is, do we have liability? You know, what, if, if we start disturbing the soil, I, I know, you know, there are real concerns about the seismic safety of the building, so this is work that I'm not challenging that, but rather, before we start, you know, spending 2.1 million in Phase One with a Phase Two, that would be even more extensive work than Phase One, presumably at a higher cost. Before we even start down that road, I think it's necessary that, that we, that we know what the findings are. I don't, Chief, I don't know if you've hired an environmental engineering firm to, to do this evaluation. I'd be looking to legal counsel for some guidance on...
EPA does it?
There is a...
Already? And issues a report?
But I don't know what the liability is to the district. I don't know what our, excuse me, Kathleen.
Sorry.
I don't know what our obligations are if we start moving dirt at that site, if we start breaking up asphalt and concrete, what, what does that trigger? You know, I've read the consent decree, I've read the state water, water, Toxics Department report on it. I'm not going to substitute my judgment for the legal counsel, but I don't, I, I think you cross that threshold pretty quickly when you start disturbing the pavement and concrete and whatnot. So where is that threshold? When is it triggered? What is triggered? You know, what does our liability and obligations become? And then I, I think we need to know that before we move forward on spending any more money on, on this warehouse site.
I have that information.
The, the city of East Fallow, in that site, the whole industrial industrial area have, have studies on top of studies over the last 10 years or more. And, and I think, and it's in the archives of the city, I, I think to, to, we don't, I don't think we really need any more studies because they already been done. We may need to get access to the studies the city already have, but I don't think we need to go and spin out a study because clearly there's remediation, there's environmental studies that have been done. So, so I think if anything, we need to try to access that information from the city and then provide information like to, to members of the community and who, and the Board as to what those studies actually say. As a, as a homeowner, as a land property owner in that particular site, you are responsible for if there are calls for remediation of, because that whole site is leached out, all the way out to the bay in terms of toxin. There are certain structures that can't, you can't put a single-family home on that site because you got to disturb, you got to tear everything down. You got to, if you got a yard, you're going to have to plant, you're planting grass and all that, the flowers, that's, that's the hazard that they're talking about. Whether some, some, some of it airborne and some of it may not, it's just leached into the ground. So I think that the studies are there, you know, and, and I think if anything that we do is look at what's already existing and then determine whether that's adequate or not. If it's not, then, you know, Rob's going to pay a hundred thousand dollars to get them to report, to tell you the same, tell you what's there. So, so if anything, I think we need to figure out, recommendation, we just figure out what study's already existing so that we can get our hands on it. And I know the Planning Department today can give us that access. I'm just saying.
You know, just to be clear, I, I could not agree with you more, Robert. I mean, this site has been extensively studied. There are, they do annual reports on, on the site. You know, my issue is how, what is the, the effect on, on the district? What does that mean to us if we begin construction at that site?
Well, I think if, if, if the, the structure, I understand what's going on at our, at the warehouse is improvements in the building. So like, we got this building, we're going to put the improvements in this building.
Not the seismic work? It's, it's exterior where we would be disturbing the pavement?
Well, I think the, the site that I think we're going to assert the payment on is the owner, the, the art center that's in front. The, they own, will own that stretch, they own that stretch.
No, again, I'm talking about our property.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know how much exterior of tearing up the building.
So if we, if we proceeded, one of the recommendations from the structural engineer is to beef up the tilt-up walls, is to dig around them at the base of the columns and add more rebar and concrete. So you're going to have some soil disturbance because you're going to have to drill through and pop some soil out. That's what Director McLaughlin's talking about.
And, and again, that, that goes to the heart of my issue. What does that trigger for, for us?
For liability purposes, yeah.
Well, if you, if you read the order, it triggers cleanup.
Yeah.
It's more than just don't do it. If you do certain things, now you, you are obliged...
Your response, obligated.
The cleanup process is an issue. So I, you know, who, whose responsibility is that? Because we are right next door to the, to the factory that, that produced these, the toxins.
There's three factories out there. Roman, then there was another one out there.
So...
So I'm just saying, yeah, I mean, and the point is that, yeah, what liability we have, you got to clean up, you know, how, what they consider that cleanup is, maybe the $2 million. I don't, I think that's, that's the issue.
Yes.
To me, it's...
And yet, I, I don't want to see us spend any more money on this warehouse until we have clarity on the toxic contamination of that site. Which is what are, what are our responsibilities, obligations, duties, liabilities?
Tim? So I understand the request. Honestly, for this budget consent item, that wasn't on my radar for tonight. If that's my fault, then it's my fault. But I think what you're asking for is clear, we can provide that information to you, but we're on a consent item budget, so I think we, so understood, you're asking for...
Yeah, I mean, you're asking me to prove 2.7 million dollars in construction.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, we don't have, we're not prepared to answer the question.
No, and I, and I wouldn't expect you to.
We clearly understand the question and can provide the information because the Board is asked for it and will provide that information.
Do you, do we need to take a vote to request that, or can you direct it?
No, I think it's direction. It's direction. So we don't need to take a vote, but he knows, Tim knows. Any other issues, Jim, or comments? Chuck has some comments.
Can I wait?
One of my comments were on the three, the two.
No, I'm done.
Okay.
Can I just get clarity on the, the direction to staff on, on that? What exactly are we?
The direction is to inform the board of potential liability for
And responsibilities.
Responsibility, liability for conditions on the whole of this property.
Actually, it's not even a respect, a legal obligation. It's not, it's, yeah, I would say legal obligation. That's really what it's about. Okay, is there, this is just, we're just, we're not approving this report. This was just for discussion. So we'll go on to item number nine, which was the other item that was pulled, which was to approve a resolution for the transfer of development contribution funds to the CIP funds to offset the cost of the purchase of truck two for station two. Harold or Kathy, do you want to ask a question first?
You know, for clarity, purchase, we bought it. So basically what we're doing is paying ourselves back out of the appropriate fund, which has been derived from impact fees for a truck that, in a study that was done in 2010 that clearly said the tipping point to have a second truck was the Gateway project. And of course, nobody at the time realized that Facebook was going to fall right behind them. So, you know, as you can see, the amount of development going on on the east side, especially multi-story, you know, has warranted this. And I think it's, we're actually in a good position where we can reimburse ourselves for that, for that piece of equipment.
How so that district, or the board had recommended that be done? Chuck, do you want to just pull?
Yes, only because I just wanted to get clarification to make sure that the numbers were right. I'm looking at page three of three, the second line. Are we transferring 1.347908?
No.
How much are we actually proposing to transfer?
We're transferring the total in the fund, which was the 825690 plus 200,000 from the most recent health memo project.
So it's that total of 10256590?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because at the finance committee meeting, we talked about doing something different.
I, I had not understood that the number we had on there was including our receivable. And so when we received it, which was after I had that number, I thought it would be in addition to that, but it wasn't. So that's why the 825 in the finance committee, there was another plus something, but it was already included in the 825. So in it, in, what I did in this case was add the 200 that's not in that 825 number that we did receive in April.
Which gets us to the 1025.
So the 1025690 is what is in the contribution, development contribution.
Just for the sake of the board, what I was proposing is that we transfer the whole amount of the truck into that account. The truck costs 1.3 million. In the fund, apparently, there's only 1 million. That would have left a deficit of 300,000 in that account. But I wasn't sure whether we could do that. And are you saying we can't do that? Is that why you didn't do it?
That is correct. I believe we cannot and not being.
We can't leave a deficit in a fund.
Not positive, but that is my understanding at this point, yes.
Well, that's correct.
What, what is corrected?
That you cannot have a deficit in the fund.
For the development, in other words, the, the report is saying, take the money that's currently in that fund, which is the 1,25,600, and then you get transferred to another fund. That's completely within your powers to do. You can't over, you can't take money from a fund that isn't in the fund. So.
Well, we expect to be getting more funds, so I, but you're absolutely sure of that from a legal standpoint?
Yeah, no, he's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And when we do get those funds, you know, if we want to do it at that time, we can. It doesn't say you can only do this once and because you didn't have enough, it doesn't matter. You know, that's your second, you know, no second chance at that.
Well, I support this, this transfer and I also want to do it legally, so. But, but I would like us to keep track of what the total expenditure is and what the shortfall is. And I'd like to make up for that shortfall in the future. Okay. That was my only clarification here. I, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution on the transfer of the development contribution funds.
Sarah? Second? Okay, Robert seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And now to item 10 from the consent calendar, which is to approve a resolution to transfer 3.55 million dollars to the PERS stabilization reserve and pay 4.69 million dollars for the district's Classic Safety Coppers unfunded actuarial liability. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll just say why I pulled it. I, I'm, I support this and I, I'll make a motion in a minute to, to, to go ahead with it. But I just wanted to be sure that the other, this, the board members, this is something we discussed in the finance committee. I didn't think this should be, this is a large amount of money. I felt the other board members should be aware of what we were doing. We have some money in the fund already. There was a balance in there of roughly a million dollars. We're putting in another 3.5 million for a total of 4.5 million. And we're trying, we're paying, we're reducing our future obligation by paying this 4.5 million dollars. And it's something that I recommend, but I, I just, I wanted to make sure that, I just thought the consent calendar was the wrong place to do this.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a mo.
I, I just had a couple of questions.
Yeah, Ken.
On this. The Classic PERS employees now contribute 9%?
No, Classic's contributing 12.
12.
Yeah.
So I, I saw a reference to a 3% employee contribution to the PERS reserve. Is that over and above that?
That is not included anymore. We did that originally when it first, they approved the MOU where they were contributing part of the employer portion. And so we had to save it, put it aside until PERS was able to.
And then looking at the amortization schedule that CalPERS produces for the district, it gives three different options. A, well, two, a 20-year and a 15-year amortization. Are we on track for the 15-year?
Yes.
Amortization? We're using that schedule? So that schedule will result in savings of almost 17 million dollars?
Assuming yes.
If, if that's correct, right?
Yeah, that's, that's PERS. I just wanted to highlight, I think that's a big deal. You know, I, I want to offer, you know, kudos for, you know, putting together a plan to put us on that trajectory. I think that's, I, I know we're the envy of a lot of other jurisdictions that can't contemplate these numbers. So I think that is something that we should brag about. You know, that 17 million dollar cost savings, you know, using that 15-year schedule.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a policy that I actually have asked you to, to have a look at again, to put in place today. It's, we're putting something away or paying down something every year. So I'm still going to keep on that, that feeling.
And remember, you're getting to the point, I mean, we haven't had the actuarial presenter, Bartell present for a little bit, but, you know, we were getting to that point where you almost have to make a decision if you still want to pay PERS because.
That's why we have to just, I want to.
Right, so how you want to put your, invest your money. And Kathy's an expert in that, so I'm not going to tell you what to do. But I know we're getting to the point where we're doing really, really well because we've been very, very aggressive. And we've been doing it for over 10 years, so.
10 years, yeah. Chuck?
Well, I just want Jim also to be aware, Kathy, please confirm, we're doing a second thing that's reducing our cost, which is we're paying the current application, which reduces our cost also.
More, yeah.
Yeah, we're pulling every lever you can pull. Pay this amount as fast as you can, but then you got to trust PERS. So that's the part that gets unwieldy, right? And we're getting closer and closer where is that what we want to do? And we've talked about that. Kathy and I have talked about it, and the board has talked about it. You know, at some point, how far do you go in paying, paying them down when their numbers keep changing, so.
Okay, did any other?
I'll, I'll make a motion then to, to authorize this, the resolution to transfer the money to PERS.
Sarah seconded?
Seconded.
And make a payment to PERS?
And make a payment.
Pay to 4.2, yeah, 3.5 million to the PERS stabilization reserve and pay 4.69 million toward the district's Classic Safety Coppers UAL. So Chuck made a motion, you seconded, Chuck. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Before you go to the next item, I just want to acknowledge Kathy, along with her staff.
Yep.
And how many hours they've spent putting all this stuff together. And it's been a lot of time and a lot of work, and they did a great job, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
A lot of late nights, a lot of meat and pizza.
Harold, for item 11, which is up next, is this, which is considering a premium with broken tower?
Yes, so we're not, we're not there.
Remove that?
Yeah, we're not there yet. Tim's been working with them, Austrian's.
Yep.
On the contract, and we're just, we have some issues still with them with the contract. They think on the, on the issues in terms of, you know, how much it's going to cost, who's going to go, what, you know, the benefits are. You've heard some of that, we know more. But we're still kind of stuck on the agreement right now, so.
Virginia, I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief, do we still have a, a donation fund? I think we have one that Philanthropic Venture Foundation.
Yeah, Philanthropic Venture Foundation. We have one for the district and one for USAR.
Do we have money in that account now?
We have some money in the USAR account, I think, still.
How many is still on there?
Yeah, it's like a couple.
7,500?
No, I don't think so.
It's about 700, yeah, 700.
So that's, that's all the money that's available for donations?
Correct, yeah. That's in there right now.
Okay.
They charge us some money that's in there, so we try not to leave it. Virginia, it's a great deal.
This is not a discussion item 11? We're like.
Yeah, we're removing that.
Okay.
Yeah, because Harold said it's not ready, so.
It's tabled in.
Yeah.
Legals, you know, they have a contract and it's not ready, so.
Okay, so moving on to item 11. This is the time when the, the draft of the board's policies and procedures are given to the directors for us to review and make changes. This is just the first pass. And basically, we'll, I mean, take this and give your comments and then we'll bring it back in June if it's ready. You want to?
And just if you could send me your comments. I did receive some feedback from Director McLaughlin. And so if anybody else has any feedback, if you want to email me directly, I'll compile those changes or suggested changes and send them up next board meeting. And then you can go through them and approve them.
So Michelle, sometimes these are given to us electronically, so it's easier to view. Is that possible to do that again?
To do what?
To email the, this updated one so that we can, so it'll be easier to view. And also if you wanted to make changes, it'd be easier to edit electronically.
No problem.
It's on the website, isn't it?
It's on the website too.
But having all that word document might be easier for you to track changes.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just to do on track changes or do edits.
Okay, item 13, which is to consider and discuss a request from California Special District Association to support their positions on Senate Bill number 13 and Assembly Constitutional Amendment number one. Michelle or Kathy?
Well, this is actually, they contacted us and asked us to put this, you know, on the board's agenda. They're talking with Director Pauli as the president. He thought it was a good idea. And we asked them if it was time sensitive. I mean, there was some time sensitivity and then they said, actually, any time would be good. So it's, you know, it's, there's a lot to it. We, you know, we included it, obviously, without giving any great detail because we've read it. I mean, it, it makes sense. I think, obviously, CSDA does a pretty good job of representing special districts, but in the end, it's up to you as the board whether or not you would agree with this or not.
Well, so I had asked to put this on the agenda because I thought that the impact fee issue SB 13 was relevant to us.
It is relevant.
So, I mean, I know, Rob, did you hear back from CSDA about this? So I think they contacted them, right?
Yeah, they're both in support of both bills, and that's why I passed them, Harold.
Well, wait, so they're opposed to CSDA? I mean, SB 13 that says they're opposed to that. But they're also, but they're, they support the lowering the threshold for passing a bond or I think a parcel tax from 2/3 to 55%. That's, that's the Assembly Constitutional Amendment.
Could we discuss this one at a time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So do you have any comments, Chuck, on the Senate bill? Which regard, which is regarding, which regards impact fees?
Well, I don't think, I don't think this really affects us at all at this point. I mean, so I, I don't really care about it, but.
Okay. Do you have any comments? Rob?
Well, it's a united, going forward with CSDA relative to these bills, and that's why we included them, because we're our, our members and there's a multitude of special districts that are affected by this, a lot more than we are.
Robert?
I actually wouldn't mind signing the letter for SB 13. I have a little bit of a problem with the other one, which is the constitutional amendment. But if we want to take one at a time, I do think that the impact fee issue is one, that would prohibit impact fees on accessory dwelling units, which I, you know, which is the proposal that the Senate bill is, that has put out and revolves around it. So, I mean, Harold, do you want to give us your thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, look, you know, we, we, you, the board, we proposed, when we were doing the impact fees before, that we take all residential dwellings off of our proposed impact fees. And so, you know, that, the impact fee study did have that on there, but then that addressed at the time, just so everybody knows the history, that we would just go after commercial structures. And then we also, within what we did within that impact fee, we said we would only, basically, we would give a credit for commercial structures that were pre-existing. And so, you know, it was really on only the new growth or if you change the use, which is how we did the impact fee. So to Director, you know, Burstein's point, this doesn't necessarily affect us. However, you know, it was in the study that we studied the dwellings. Now, East Palo Alto had an issue with this. Abbotton had an issue with the dwellings. So, you know, by the very nature of not including dwellings, there was really no issue or impact to Abbotton anymore with impact fees. A majority of the concerns, both in Melo Park and East Palo Alto, were alleviated because they have a lot of residential and they're concerned about additional cost to people from us and other entities. So that took that off the plate. So, you know, I just give you the history of what we've done only because any impact fee study is going to always tell you you got residential in there too. So, you know, going forward, maybe next time you do an impact fee, you say you want to include residential. I don't know. But currently how we do it, and Tim could comment too, we don't include residential in what we're doing.
You know, the only thing that I, I, it kind of, maybe it's in here, I didn't, I didn't see it. Second dwelling units are, it's a, it's a growing thing in the East Falls. There's already, there are illegal units there, but it's a growing trend in, in some neighborhoods to cities to, to legalize those illegal units because it was, they are primarily being looked at and geared towards affordable housing, form of affordable housing, whether it's for your, your son or your daughter to come back home to Ruth or for some other seniors who may be retiring and need additional income. But there's a restriction that, on that, and, and what is being looked at right now is that those units would, if they're affordable, then certain costs will be, will be reduced.
Or waived.
Or waived to make them affordable. I don't see any language in here regarding, regarding that. So, you know, they're making some attempt to, to, towards that direction, but I think it would add motif to it if they, if the home was affordable.
And that's just this bill. So remember, there's a lot more going on right now.
Well, I mean, we don't have to do anything. I just wanted to put it out there because it was, it was brought up to our attention.
Well, you know, one of the directors mentioned, I think it was Director Solano, you know, it's being a team player too, where you're trying to help other districts out.
Tim?
I can just mention two quick things, one is that, um, the district's impact fee schedule, um, is not adopted pursuant to the state, state law of the mitigation fee act, so understand that this is written towards impact fees, if they had been adopted by the local jurisdictions, you remember we had that issue about authority, and second, there is a number of other provisions in the bill to promote accessory dwelling units, um, so it's not just the bill just about impact fees. And I, I know, it, it seems to reach out, it's about impact fees, but I just wanted to bring to your attention, there's other provisions that are basically to promote the construction of accessory, accessory dwellings and restrict regulation of them, uh, you know, you, there's more to it than just the, so I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to plug that, I mean, it's your choice.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, I think it's the team player, it's a board, but who knows, we may need to have memorality around some causes that we may need to have folks around.
Yeah, this isn't, like you said, this isn't the end of it, you're going to get slug and he's coming on housing, I mean, everything is coming on housing, low income, you're going to get bombarded with this stuff. And they're all going to want, they're all going to want to do it for free and waive fees and start working on all kinds of things, especially within the transport or, or density higher, bigger, I mean, it's insane what's going on, but it's coming.
What do y'all want to do, I mean, we can.
I'd like to divide them, I support the Senate bill but not the.
Right, I, that's how I feel too. So, are you okay with sending a letter for the, for the Senate bill?
I, as long as we, as long as we, that we parallel what the CSDA recommendations are.
Yeah, well, they have a form letter in here too, so I would be okay with that, but I agree with you on the Assembly bill, I'm not.
Let's have a, let's have a motion.
Okay, is there a motion to, um, basically sign and mail a letter in support of Senate Bill thirteen?
Oppose.
I mean, to oppose it, but, um, to support CSDA's recommendation, that's what. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then we can take a look.
Can, can I just say something really quick?
Sure.
So I need a volunteer to fill in a corporate user sample letter, the part about the wide description of public legislation, legislation will negatively impact your community and so on and so forth, so somebody wants to volunteer for that? I don't know.
I'm confident staff can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll take care of that, I'm always good at giving negatives anyway, so, pros and cons.
You're on the list.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
I'd like to make a motion that we not take a position on the second, on the second bill.
Which is the constitutional amendment to lower the threshold essentially, from a two-third foot to fifty-five percent. Is there a second on that before, before we discuss? So Chuck's made the motion not to take a position on that.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I do.
Chuck, Chuck made a motion to not take a position on the Assembly Constitutional Amendment, Jim just seconded it, so is there any discussion on that?
It's sort of around, around Prop thirteen and I, I personally don't support that.
Get ready, board's coming.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of Chuck's motion? Aye. Rob?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that motion was sent to Chuck.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, item fourteen, consider for approval the request for proposals for a district's guidance space needs assessment, Harold, and this went through the Strategic Planning Committee.
Right, so, I mean, the Strategic Planning Committee, I think, was in favor, they thought that it was a well-done report, I give, you know, John Hischcock really all the credit, I worked a little bit with him, but he took on the rest of it, I mean, again, it speaks for itself, I know there's some modifications on the timelines, uh, you know, Director Berstein probably will bring that up, but remember, you know, some of these things, it becomes honorary depending upon how much we're trying to do, so, you've got to get a vendor to bid it, and you get a vendor, you know, hopefully within a timeframe of cost to be able to do it, so, the only thing I would say is just be careful how far and how big you want to make this thing, so, but that's my, that's my two cents.
Any comments, Jim?
I just, Chief, when we do, like, the standard of, of coverage study, how far out does that work?
Reasonably ten years, I mean, that's really, that's really all you can do, I mean, you know, look, and I would just say in that, because you know as well as I think everybody sitting in this room, think about where we were ten years ago, what we know just in the region, and how much has changed, right? So I'd say, like, the Bohan project, we saw Bohan's project, we saw the development caps come off a pipe, and F A R, Florida ratio, nobody saw Facebook, you know, what they're doing.
Right.
Now, there's only so much developable land, so. Yeah, so they, so they say.
The reason I'd like to see us take a longer time horizon, I agree that we can't know for certain what's happening, but we probably won't be addressing the Station One and that whole complex for three to five years, it would take another five years to build it, and by the time we got done, we wouldn't know what we were building because we hadn't gone out that far, it seems to me, to the extent, I think we could have some idea of what, how much administration we're going to need, how much headcount, what kind of, uh, what kind of, you know, administrative size we need, I'm not saying it's going to be accurate, but we'll make decisions about building that.
Do you have a number of mine?
No, he was saying thirty, he was saying thirty.
Well, I was saying, we ought to be thinking out twenty to thirty, we're not going to know, and, and one of the reasons for saying this is, I have this other comment that I'd like to add as a possible item here, is the disposition of, of a property, and, and my feeling is that on that one property, we could consolidate all of our administrative needs, we could sell the admin building at one-seventy Middlefield, which could generate somewhere, I don't know, close to ten million dollars, maybe eight, ten million dollars, and that would help us build the new thing, and we ought to at least look at disposition as one possibility. In any case, I, again, I know how hard it is to look out there, but those are the decisions, when we bought that property, we were looking out twenty to thirty years, so we're already making decisions out that far, we ought to have as much help as we possibly can get.
My only concern is, when you give this to a vendor and you say that, that, I don't know if that affects, you know, everybody wants a crystal ball, so then how, how long out is the crystal ball to go, so I don't know if it would be, I don't know if it discourages a vendor or encourages a vendor, because I guess if you say it's thirty years, then, you know, how long can I be, right?
Can I just say for the chief here once, remember, chief, though, you're one of the people that criticized, criticized Chief Tai for looking out only twenty years at a station and not looking out thirty or forty years.
Chief Tai didn't look at all, what he did was he just built new for what was there, so.
Okay, well.
But I, see, for me, I would say, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I just worry, this is unique and we're not familiar with it, and so getting vendors, I just don't know if it is encouraging or discouraging.
I would suggest perhaps, uh, asking the vendor, what's the typical, how, how far out do you go, I don't know if there's, if there's costs related to looking at ten years versus twenty or thirty years, but perhaps there's a standard, I, I don't know.
Well, let me ask this, and I'm not trying to surprise Tim, but Tim's got more experience on impact fees, when we did those studies, what was the, I can't remember what the thresholds they typically goes, ten years or?
It was, they looked at a ten-year, a ten-year projection, but, I mean, honestly, we, I'm not as familiar with space needs assessments, but you can always put options in an RFP, you know, say that, for this at a minimum, but if you can provide a lot, I mean, I won't write it for you, but you could put, put options in there.
Like a range?
Yeah.
Yeah, a range.
That would be fine, I'd just like to look out as far as we can.
Yeah, I agree. So perhaps in the RFP. Yeah, maybe say a near-term ten and the outside thirty years.
And any place in between.
Well, let's hope.
I'd call you, Chelsea.
So where, um, where would that be, can you modify that, Harold?
Yeah, well, I'll just tell John to modify within a scope, I mean, it's simpler than that.
Yeah, I, I.
And then I'd like to add the word on page three of the proposal, under findings and recommendations, the first paragraph there. The last sentence of that first paragraph on, on page three, I'm sorry, it's page one sixty-nine, these are unnumbered pages, one sixty-nine of the board, findings and recommendations, the last sentence says, "In doing so, the consultant shall look at lease, rent, space, real property acquisition, relocation, renovation, and new construction." I'd like to add, "real property acquisition and disposition," just as one more possibility.
Real property what?
Acquisition and disposition.
Acquisition, which is there, and then add the word "and disposition."
So it's basically selling, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think, um, that just gives us more options, to, you know, different scenarios, more, so different.
Is that a different study?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if we didn't need one, if we could accommodate all our needs without using one-seventy, for example.
No, I'm with you, but I mean, if, if this study is to tell us.
What the needs are.
You, you need this square footage, you know, going forward, then I think this, I think the second phase to that would be then, okay, how, how do we get there? And, and that could be disposition.
Well, I'm not arguing with you, but I think this study was going to talk about where we put these things, is that wrong?
Um, I thought it was.
It's more of an assessment.
Determined to tell us how we're going to use our space.
Or tell us how much we need.
Need, yeah, and how, and how.
How much, how much, an inventory of what we have, and then a projection of what we need.
But it's also asking for what do we need to acquire, how much of it should we buy, how much of it should we rent, that's what it says.
I don't think so, I, I mean, I didn't take it as, how much do we buy, I think we are pretty much locked in with where we are now with acquisition, I think the question would come, maybe not, if we got enough ten million to buy something else, but I, I think it's mainly looking at the space we got and what can we accommodate in that space.
It doesn't say that though, Robert, it says we could lease or rent it, we could acquire it, we could relocate it, we could renovate it, or we could build new construction. It's telling what the possibilities are.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, Tim.
Chuck, in adjacencies on that same page, um, under A.
Under three.
Yeah, so three, do you think that captured, I mean?
No, see, this is why I thought it was going to actually tell us, so, let me come back, A, I'm glad you're pointing that out, because that's one of the places I got the idea, that this was going to tell us where we put various functions, we're going to put this on this site, this on that site, and so forth, and that's why I wanted to look at the possibility that maybe we could consolidate everything on one site and get rid of another site, um, I just didn't want to exclude the idea that we could dispose of something. I mean, this, this looks like it's going to tell us where to put all these various functions.
Well, not, and it gives us the choices of possibilities.
Yes, where we could put these various things. I mean, it's got us, if you look at B, we're already modifying the floor plans of things, we're redesigning the space, this is pretty specific here already.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Harold, what do you think of adding disposition?
I, I don't see a problem with that, I mean, you know, I, I think, you know, normally you would do that anyway if you said, we're going to move everything to one side, you know, either that or you're going to rent it, so, I mean, there's always so many options, right, if you're not going to use something anymore.
Should we say disposition and consolidation?
As many possibilities as there are, yeah.
I, I would suggest disposition and consolidation.
Jim? Do we have any idea what the cost is going to be?
No.
We have no idea.
That's, that's what this.
This is new ground for us, we haven't, I mean, you know, we've talked about wanting vendors and everything, Director McLaughlin of the last committee meeting, we talked about some of those things too, so, we haven't done anything like this before, so it's hard to say, you know, I think the report's well-done, John did a good job of putting it all together, now it's going to be, you know, who's.
Has any other fire teams done this?
Not to my knowledge, we, we've borrowed and added our own stuff over the years on facility studies that we've done, mostly on infrastructure, how long things will last, with the thought that either we're going to rebuild it or, you know, redo it, and then of course, as you know, bringing in a commercial real estate agent to say, hey, we need a bigger footprint, where can we find it, we got to leave this facility and go somewhere else, that's where we end up with, start buying facilities or, you know, residential lots and extra buildings you have already.
Because there is something, um, on a business model, I talked to about square footage for each employee and office space and things like that, is there anything with the public safety model that has that been, or?
I am, yeah, station design has that, there's, there's scoping and there's, there's programmatical programming, and so, you know, how big a facility you need, how many bay drive-through, that's why we set a standard model, Station Six withstanding, because we unfortunately sold a piece of land that was next door to it on Oak Grove Avenue years ago in the fifties, and we just kept it, you know, that's why when you say disposition, just remember, sometimes you regret it down the road, because, you know, you got rid of something, but, you know, at the end of the day, um, you know, we, they're scoping for fire stations and programming, that's pretty well-known.
And no one else has done this?
Not overall, the entirety, yeah, everything, space needs assessment, and remember, we're unique in some ways too, I mean, you know, you have an off-site office structure, you have, uh, you have property that other people, you know, haven't been fortunate enough to have next to their facilities, we have a warehouse facility, so, yeah, it does look a little bit different than I think some other agencies.
And we'll have a better idea as to what this will cost once, hopefully, we hear back from some of these firms. Do you have reservations about it, Rob?
I don't want to be the first, you know, as to, uh, I would like to see a public safety, some type of a public safety model, you know, relative to where you put your admin services, because I remember when Station One was it, and we had everything in Station One.
Nineteen point seven.
And things fit, and then when we built the admin building, well, things kind of expanded, I mean, and then we bought the building behind and people moved into that building, so, you know, if, what is it, if, if we build it, they will fill it, I mean, you know, and, uh, what Jim brings up a great point is that, you know, we have a lot of space, that we really need a lot of that space, but my reservation is that, you know, there really should be some type of a public safety model or something that says, just like in a business model, you know, uh, there's, conference room is this size, bullpen relative to so many employees or so many feet, because I'm dealing with this at Santana Road on a, a private consulting, so, there is a standard that's set up.
For stations, yeah.
But, but not incorporation with?
Admin and all those functions?
No.
A little bit different, I mean, again, you know, we, we programmed a new station here, it was nineteen point seven, that was twelve years ago, and that was, you know, the, the Taj Mahal of a subsurface parking area, which is expensive, and then any time you start to go up with a steel structure, that's a firehouse, that's an essential service building, which is built at one point five on code, which is going to cost you double of what a normal building would cost, you know, one of the reasons we went to an off-site admin building was because we could get an existing structure that was built as an office, right, versus trying to glue it onto a, a firehouse where then it creates a whole different set of problems, so, to build a new one and put all that in, I know it was nineteen point seven at the time, I would say it's probably over thirty million, if you dig down, and this is the thing where, hopefully this will give us some of what we knew already or what we looked into, which is, if you try and do a Revit City three-story, you know, firehouse, put admin, all those things in the same building, it's super expensive, and then where do you put all the parking and how do you deal with all that stuff, so, you know, it might be, it might be better, the reason we moved down the street and spent three and a half million bucks was, then that freed us up, this no longer was the priority, we could build the station that we needed to in East Palo Alto, so, you know, we made, we made moves to kind of break out of a public safety model, which is the traditional, you got to have your admin where your firehouse is, but that's the most expensive way to do it, because that's the most expensive building you can build, because it's essential services, so, you know, and I know Woodside's doing this now too, they're, they're trying to rebuild their firehouse, but they've moved to a, a business structure as well, temporarily. Thank you, chief.
I mean, the, the things that we don't really know here, the fire stations, I think we're, we're pretty knowledgeable about only A.
Yeah, those are all programs.
It's the warehouse, it's office space, it's a training facility, and Jim had a whole bunch of studies where agencies, I don't know that the space for an office, whether it's public safety office or public works office, it seems like that would really be the relevant factor, it's still just an office, but, um, there were lots of, there were lots of specialists who did this kind of work.
Right.
And they know what a conference room is, they know what an assembly room is, depending on the occupancy, so it seems like there's a tech, we wouldn't be the first to do such a study.
That's what, how would you say that, a business model, like, if we put our HR manager in an office, and we put our, our training chief in an office, the training chief maybe stores for equipment, maybe a larger desk, maybe has to not only monitor what's going on on the field, but has accessibility to an SAN network, so, he or she needs, as a division chief or battalion chief or training chief, would be different than an HR manager having an office, even though one is operations and one is administrative services, but there's still no mom. having an office, even though one is operations and one is administrative services, but there's still no mom?
I think in the course of their interviews, they would uncover those kinds of issues. They interview the people who occupy the buildings.
Yeah, because there's a functionality piece to that, because don't forget, if you've got a training chief, you want him at a training facility, and you typically want a training facility, a working fire facility. And why you want that is, and I can tell you just from experience, if you're pulling hose or reloading hose, you need bodies. So, you know, having a station right there to have bodies to help you do it makes you much faster to be able to redo things and then have more training. So, you know, what people don't realize here is that headquarters crew is integral to this training facility because they're constantly helping the trainings that are going on, not just the subject matter experts, but, you know, you keep, you keep a unit here or units that are helping not only with the training, but the apparatus they may need and so forth to support the training.
I'm all for it, just.
Tell us how much it's going to cost.
Right, so we'll know once we get some.
As soon as we get some type of estimate.
We're working on it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so any other comments before we make a motion with the amended language? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the request for proposal for a district-wide space needs assessment that includes the language and disposition and consolidation on page 169? So that sentence would be, that sentence would read, in doing so, the consultant shall look at lease slash rent space, real property acquisition and disposition and consolidation, relocation, renovation, and new construction.
We're also going to put in some options about the time horizon.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's right. Expand that from ten years to ten to thirty years. I can't find that on the light.
I was taking it from the staff report, I'm not sure.
Oh, here it is, it's, I know, it's on page 168. No, it's, it's here, it's on page 168. Projection shall be ten years in the future, under number one, under level of analysis.
And again, we use that because that's what we did on the impact these studies.
So can we put ten to thirty years?
Yep.
Okay, great, so it'll be with that.
We'll let you know, if that's a problem, then I'll also let you know.
Hey, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries and is due. Item fifteen, consider and approve the San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Group Advanced Life Support Paramedic Designation Agreement. Harold?
Well, at the end of the day, I mean, I would say, this is not the annual agreement, this is the agreement that the EMS JPA, which we're a partner, has with the county. And essentially what you need to do is, you know, give Director McLaughlin, my opinion, probably wants to know whether or not this board is in favor or against. You know, Melanie actually wrote me an analysis that's part of it. She's the one that, you know, wrote the title twenty-two part, so I'm not going to claim all the credit because she did most of the legwork on writing things up in the past for this one as well. But, you know, I participated in the negotiation session with the county EMS agency. We shared, you know, it tells you, watch it through what happened, but essentially the thirty-page agreement that they gave us, after, again, thanks to Melanie and others, you spent a lot of time rewriting or having things that we would be in disagreement with and wanted different language and wrote it all up. You know, we as the chiefs looked at it, and one of the chiefs proposed, why don't we just, you know, instead of doing that, why don't we just go back to the original agreement we're under right now and see if we can make a couple tweaks in there? Because, you know, things were getting contentious and problematic, and trying to go to that new agreement, you know, like I said, I mean, it's not the number of pages, you know, because it was ten, twenty pages longer, it's the number of problems and issues that were created in those pages, right? And the changes that they made, the way in which they presented it, the issues that they were really trying to become much more controlling in terms of their oversight and so forth, which we thought was problematic. So ultimately, we made that proposal, they accepted it, we gave them some modifications to the ten-page original previous ten-year agreement we've been working underneath. And then we met on a Thursday, I regret that I didn't bring Melanie, because, you know, we met with myself and other chief, the city manager, and then the director, executive director for the JPA, met with Nancy LaFola, who's the executive director for the county, and their attorney, her assistant, who was a scribe, and then one more person, I'd forget what her role was for the EMS JPA, we met in South San Francisco. And, you know, they came in, we did it up on a board, and we ended up with essentially a thirteen-page agreement, which is a lot different than the one that we had. Melanie did a good assessment, which is the first part of this report of things that were the old one, that are not in the new agreement. A lot of it's oversight, a lot of it's, you know, more restrictions, a lot of it is things that we were not in favor of. And it also raised a number of concerns about what was in the ten-page agreement before, which was things like no-notice inspections that nobody really noticed before but was in there. Then it gets into, as I, you know, what our interests were, which I tried to, this part, you know, Melanie wasn't involved with it, but, you know, it gets into fire agencies' compromises moving forward, and really went into the equipment. I know Director Bernstein had some questions about this, and I know you guys have had those too. The Lucas devices are not an item, AMR, carries, supports, or anything, but it was in committee, and this is the structure that, you know, I just need to tell you how it works. There is a committee that the EMS agency has that has our folks on it, that they run all equipment ideas, you know, things like the Lucas device or pilots through. So it's not as if there isn't a policy section and a group that doesn't evaluate equipment. And I had to take a big step back on this too, because if you look at it from the county standpoint, you want a process, well, they have one for the introduction of new equipment. I texted Melanie, this is why I wish she was there, because they said, hey, you know, what was the process with the Lucas devices? Well, county EMS ultimately had to approve.
They had to.
They had to approve them, even though we paid for them. So, you know, that's, I think there's still those opportunities in there. And if you're them, you want standardization. I mean, I, I get where they're coming from. If you're running a big fifty-two, you know, FRU, fire unit, eleven-on-the-street, everyday ambulance system, and you're trying to get to a level of consistency and standardization. So I get what they want. And I think, you know, the concerns that you had, and it's not a perfect arrangement. There is a, there's policy that surrounds this, and then there's also process, which is there's a standing committee to introduce new equipment, to beta-test it, and then, you know, my biggest concern of all, which is, as you know, the problem with being in one common system is some people have money and other people don't. So you don't want the common lowest denominator to hold you back, which is another fire agency can't buy it, so does that mean everybody can't get it, right? They, they're not allowed to do it. I think, and I'll let Melanie jump in, I don't, that's not been our experience so far because currently the Lucas devices, not everyone in the county has them. Some are getting them through grants, which is another method that I think is a good way to go. And then this technology fund that we kind of stumbled upon, which I, which I would have known about ten years ago because we would have been trying to be more aggressive on that front, you know, those are things that, that we weren't, we didn't know either existed. That's kind of all come up in this process too. So I don't know if you want to say anything about how that committee works.
And just, you know, speaking about the Lucas, it is now a policy, so they're not going to take that away from us, even though other fire agencies cannot afford that piece of equipment because it's in protocol. And so that's here to stay. When I was hired on here, it was something that was taken away prior to me arriving. And so for the probably first year that I was here on the Quality Leadership Committee, which I'm now chair of, we as a group fought to bring it back successfully. And so the Lucas device isn't going to go away because, like I said, it is in policy. And so we can use that same process for other pieces of equipment that we find effective or progressive, that we as a district can afford, but maybe another agency might not be able to. Well, what our taxpayers and residents expect of us. Correct. Really, that's what it comes down to. They're paying for all this, and they deserve to get what they're paying for. So there is a process.
And Melanie deserves, I mean, being humble, but, you know, her, her ability to go in there and negotiate and convince people that that was the right move, you know, was partially based upon her background in the system and so forth. So she deserves a lot of credit for being one of the ones that could speak to Dr. Gilbert, who's not, you know, always the easiest person to deal with, and I say that lovingly because I've had many discussions with him, but, you know, Melanie was able to convince him and others that it was the right move to bring those devices back, based upon high-performance CPR, which had a, which had a negative impact on the crews that we have too. I mean, I can't, you know, I emphasize to you that you have an automated device that allows you then to do different things in terms of the care of patient. And that device, it doesn't get tired, it doesn't sweat, and when you're doing CPR on somebody, then your hand placement starts to move. And high-performance CPR, just so you know, is a much faster pace than we ever did before. We were actually sending, and still are in some cases, sending a second unit to a call, which means now we're taking another rig out of service potentially. It was a real impact to what we were doing. And, you know, there was, there was positive patient outcomes, but there were negative implications to how, you know, our system was working based upon the way in which additional units were being dispatched and just how difficult it was for the crew to operate in that environment where you, again, you knew you had a piece of technology, you just couldn't use it anymore. So again, you know, Melanie jumped in with both feet and got that turned around, and I give her a lot of credit for that because, you know, not that it's abusive to the firefighter, but it just made it more difficult, you know, already what's a difficult situation. And I think sometimes critical people, what they don't get is, you know, when you're in somebody's house and it's a hot day and it's a hundred degrees in there, and somebody says, hey, go do a hundred compressions per minute in a bathroom the size of a postage stamp with a patient that takes up the majority of the place and you just can't get him out of there right now, and you know in the rig you have a piece of equipment you could use to make that much better, that's tough, that's tough for them to get to wrap their heads around because they don't understand why is it we're not able to use this. So again, you know, those are the types of things that, you know, I think become a positive.
Thank you, Melanie. Thanks.
Good job.
Rob?
So we can use upgraded equipment and they're not restricting us from using certain types of equipment that we have presently? So they're not taking any equipment that we have to enhance?
Let me split the baby on you, so if you're saying, it still has to go through a process for new equipment?
If you had something new.
Through the document.
This is what we.
The same process that was before.
Correct.
That's all I, I just want to make sure that they're not restricting us to use the better equipment. And evidently they're not, so thank you. Lot of, lot of.
Can I ask, in, in my email, I received fourteen different documents on all this that you forwarded to us. But I don't know what, what this is or what it means or.
So the one, you looked at the board packet?
No, it was an email that you sent out to the board members about, it had the minutes of the meetings, it had a number of documents, several memos from John Ogilvy, budget stuff and so forth.
Oh, I sent you what Director McLaughlin's going to get in his meeting tomorrow night, just so you would see what's going on at that JPA.
Ah, I see.
Yeah, that was more, and I know there's a lot more to it, but it was what I wanted to do. And then it was Director Salano served on that. I just, and, you know, I want to make sure you and Director Jones has, you got to see what, as the liaison of the EMS JPA, what he's looking at. So tomorrow, when he goes and makes, you know, he speaks on behalf of his board, you basically have everything that he's looking at. I, I wasn't expecting you to weigh in on all of it, but just so you have an exposure level to what, you know, Jim's walking into tomorrow night.
Well, I'll empathize with Jim. I tried to go through it this weekend, but, so let me ask you a question.
We're trying to do everything in one meeting because there's so many players that it's hard to get everybody to go to more than one meeting.
In the staff report, I'm trying to remember where it is, it still makes reference, if I'm not mistaken, to sixty-one FRUs?
Oh, yeah.
On page three of three, the last bullet.
Yeah, let me explain it. So actually, let me go through the last part. So again, Melanie did a good job of the under discussion, the compromises, and then the fire agency compromises bottom of page two, you know, we talked about the devices, we just talked about that. And then if you go to the second bullet point, it says, no inclusion of fire agencies have the ability to have their EMS manager coordinator independent of the JPA supervisor. However, the practice and application of agency EMS managers, which is what Melanie is, will specifically be addressed in committee and within policy. So again, you know, within the contract, they didn't want to change the contract language. Again, we're the only agency doing this, but the chiefs supported it, saying that, hey, if agencies wanted an EMS manager, as long as it wasn't costing the program any more money, and specifically as we got into disciplinary cases and so forth with those entities that are currently representing more than one jurisdiction other than themselves, you know, they're also interested in aspects of this. So all that said, you know, because I know for Melanie, for me, this was a big deal too, is we're still going to have representation. There's, they're going to have to work out some of the details of how the manager spot would work through this. Now, I say that, and what did Melanie just tell you? She's the chair of one of their committees, they asked her to do that. So I wish they would have put it within a language, you know, look, I, I was one guy paddling upstream against the current on this one because we're the only one. And so when you're sitting in a room where you've already eliminated a thirty-page agreement, you're modifying an existing agreement, you know, I mean, I brought it up, I fought as hard as I could fight. At the end of the day, those other entities that are in there with me all realized, yeah, the chiefs, the chiefs have said they want, you know, they want aspects of this, but we'll leave it to committee and not try and cloud the negotiation up with this item. So I wish they would have changed the language, but they didn't do it. But that does, don't lose hope because I think we're going to fix it a different way, and we'll continue to pursue that.
One question on the second to the last bullet, where it says, no mention of cross-county fire agency automatic aid.
Let me, let me go through exactly.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah.
So the third, the second, third bullet, the second one on this page, page three of three, inclusion of JPA agrees to notify EMS agency advance of replacement into a removal of service of each permanent JP paramedic first responder vehicle, and an example of a new permanent first responder will be Rescue Seventy-Seven and Truck Two. So what I didn't know, and what they had in their original agreement, was pretty much anytime we took a rig in or out of service, they wanted to be notified. I'm not even notified when that happens, okay? Because I don't need to know that. Well, that's in the weeds. I don't, you know, I mean, you know, if I need to know all that stuff, I'll be up twenty-four hours a day because there's always something happening in a dynamic system. You know, rigs are coming up, they're going out of service, mechanical, whatever. If they get in an accident or something, I'm going to find out, I'll hear about it. But, I mean, for the most part, we confronted the EMS agency and said, what do they need to know this for? And the answer was they couldn't articulate a good reason. Now, the one thing they could articulate that made sense was, and we were, we're guilty of it, and I never thought about it, we never told them when we put Rescue Seventy-Seven and Truck Two in service. So we added an FRU to the system. Well, that is a big deal. You know, I mean, the EMS agency should know that there's more equipment out there running as paramedic first response units or having the potential to do that because then that adds more paramedics and so forth. So, you know, guilty is charged. I never thought, I mean, I would have noticed the county chiefs, we've added these units, we have those discussions at the chiefs' meetings, they don't go to those meetings all the time. So I, we agreed, we said, okay, in that thirteen-page agreement, if and when somebody adds an FRU or takes one out of service permanently, then we'll go ahead and let you know that because that doesn't change the dynamic of what's going on. And so what was the good part about that, it was asked about the sixty-one FRUs. I'll jump to that one, which is the last bullet point because it kind of references the same thing. There's fifty-two FRUs first response units in the system. We're currently being paid for seven. All seven are engines. However, we run ten pieces of equipment. We run an additional two-ladder trucks and a rescue company, as you know.
And we're not getting paid for that.
Right, so we're not going to get paid the sixty thousand per year, but what they are going to do now is use the technology fund to repay us for the standardized equipment, which is what we have to outfit all three of those units. And that's actually good because I don't really.
They mean their standardized standard. You mean their standardized standard? Our standard, our standard?
Right, we still would have to pay for the Lucas devices in half for all three of those. And any additional equipment that they don't have is their standardized equipment. But at about $37,000 per unit, it's well over $100,000 that the fire district is gonna recoup from this agreement by saying, in fact, there's 61 first response units in the system. And now, you know, why would I want the $60,000 per unit? It kind of obligates us where we sometimes, if staffing, we have a problem with a paramedic, we don't have enough, we'll pull the paramedic off of the ladder truck because we don't necessarily need the ladder truck to be ALS all the time. We run it that way because of a call, for example, if a call comes in here, the engine's already in a call, the truck can take the call in the same area. It's not primary, and I wouldn't want it to be primary. But it, again, it makes, so we don't have to move another unit into this, in this area, which can create coverage problems and other movement problems. I mean, a lot of that, I think we discussed in our last special meeting, you know, why I thought the truck should go to 77. Because East Palo Alto gets a lot of secondary medical calls, so the truck's going to a lot of medical calls. Whereas would that be more appropriate to have the rescue do that if it was at Station 2 or upgraded to another, you know, engine company or rescue company, a larger rescue company? So, you know, again, I thought this was a good move for us. It legitimizes that there's 61 units system-wide, not 52. And it kind of memorializes that's what our system looks like today. And it buys, including maintenance, of our EMS medical equipment that's been approved by the county. And in our case, since we've already paid for it and you approved that, it reimburses us for that cost. That's the 61.
Okay.
Okay, so a question about that?
Yeah.
That's what I was asking, because in the budget that they have as part of the materials for Jim, it only has the 52, it doesn't have 61.
Because they're proposing that funding, temping that technology up.
So let me ask, I mean, it's $100,000 one time. Is it really worth it? Wouldn't it be better for us to keep those units for just our district's use and not?
So you still can't, they're not dictating to you that it's a full-blown FRU.
He can pull out.
Right.
You mean, they can't mobilize them to some other?
No, what I liked about, at first I was going down that road and then I realized very quickly, I still like that we have the autonomy of how we use the unit. But the unit, as we explained to them, is getting used to the system, like I said. When that ladder truck goes on a medical call, it's taking the call in this first area because the engine is already out on another medical call. Or let's say we go to a multi-casualty incident, like a vehicle accident, nobody says that the truck paramedic isn't treating a patient. Well, that didn't need medical equipment to do that. So, you know, in one way, they're funding additional equipment that we would already supply and we would pay for. So it's an offset to us, is really what it is.
Mechanically, then how do we pull that offline and not make it available outside the district?
There's no requirements for them in terms of legislating to us that we're not a first, we're not an FRU frontline unit, which is the seven that we have.
In their dispatch system?
Our, well, I mean, we still, when you say dispatch, I know where you're going because you're concerned about auto aid, that's another discussion. And the good news is on this, it's only equipment. We only show seven FRUs in the system, really, that's being used frontline for ALS, under auto aid. And I'd say we don't change that.
But somebody's going to dispatch those other three units.
Unless you change how you do that, which is something we can do under this new computer dispatch system. Can't do it now, but you can do it.
Can you get to the auto aid bullet?
Yes, is that the one above it?
Yes.
Yeah, so one of the things that I brought up, and again, you know, we're unique, which was, I wanted to make sure, the good news was, it was a little, you know, it was a little weird to have their lawyer in there, but, you know, the end of kind of worked out, right? Or else I would have brought Tim with us, you know, it's like, hey, you got a lawyer? I'll bring a lawyer too, okay? But it worked out, I mean, it was kind of collegial, at least at this point. I asked, I want to make sure that none of the language within the 13 pages prohibited us from having auto aid with another entity because we're the only agency that borders two counties. And it does look different in Daly City and San Francisco. San Francisco really doesn't want to do auto aid with Daly City, that's kind of a closed system. That's a little bit different with the airport, which is a little weird too because, you know, the airport's in San Mateo County, but it's protected by the San Francisco Fire Department, but police service is provided by the Sheriff's Department. It's kind of this hodgepodge, you know, way of doing business. But that's just the way it is and we're not gonna change it. So San Francisco, you know, operates in a whole different way, meaning that when you, you know, you can't really compare one end of the county that could do auto aid versus our end. So at least in those 13 pages of the agreement, it doesn't prohibit us. Now, what it really means is that we get into the auto aid agreements, this is where this has to get worked out. And the county EMS agency has to ensure that we're able to do cross-border EMS paramedic delivery of services. Now, we further complicate, you know, our issue here because Palo Alto has 201 rights and an ambulance.
Yeah.
But, you know, remember, we're not asking for that. What we're asking for is an engine-to-engine, paramedic on an engine or first response unit. Can we do that, right, within reason? I think they're open to that. We just have to show that it would work within a, you know, a way that would not negatively impact the San Mateo County system. And I get it, I don't see how it would. And I reminded them, we're doing fire auto aid already. And by the way, every time we respond to Dunbar Bridge, Bayfront, or Highway 101 or 280, we're going into San Mateo County. So we're treating patients in a different county. Because it was brought up, well, you know, what about their protocols? It's like, well, we're in there, they're over here, so.
See, that's the problem, Harold, is that that just shows you how much more influence they have over us than we would probably want.
Well, actually, I look at it a different way. I look at it as, this is already happening. I mean, it's.
I know, but the fact that it's an issue and that they're bothered by it and that they would even.
I don't know they thought of it.
Well, that's the point, they only thought about their own situation.
You know, Highway 101, you can't just jump over the barriers. So, you know, we've been down as far as San Antonio Road and find a car accident, we're treating patients.
Right.
So I think what would surprise them was, they don't understand the dynamic portion of fire aid, which is, you know, yeah, we're not waiting for the Palo Alto or Mountain View fire truck to show up to a call in San Mateo County, we're gonna treat the patient. And everybody, all the fire folks, we all accept that. I think they're having to catch up to the fact that that's just a reality, which in one way makes it easier for us because their exclusive agreements and their protocols, they should be looking to see what's different in San Mateo County and what's different here and trying to line them all up because we're not gonna change, you know, we're not gonna stop at the county line and go, oh, we can't go into San Mateo County.
I get it, Harold, but I still view this almost as an imbalance of power and authority. Where they've got so much more influence that they don't even think about all the other, the rest of the county. And it's a fast-growing area, so I'm just, I'm just down not by the concern.
I wouldn't say the rest of the county, I'd say other cross-border county relationships.
I don't think they care about us either. Otherwise, they would understand that this is an issue. And it's in a very, very congested and high-density area. So that's just my.
I have to come up with that for Jim.
Because.
I mean, if you leave auto aid mutually, you get the response from Palo Alto Fire?
No, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about the other.
They're backing up one another.
Rob, I'm talking about.
Excuse me?
I'm, you're putting words in my mouth.
I'm trying to figure out here, okay, that no one is, like, as the chief said, no one is stopping at county lines in order not to treat people and not to go to emergencies. We have auto aid mutually and things are working out properly. I don't know about this power thing or whatever, but response happens, lives are saved. When a person picks up the telephone and dials 911, I don't think people care if it's a city of Palo Alto fire truck or a Meadow Park fire truck or even a Fremont fire truck. They just want a response and we give them that service.
We don't, we don't tell our people.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that I agree, that I agree with you, Rob. What I'm saying is that I don't think that the northern part of the county, where a lot of the influence and authority is centered, takes into consideration that we have to have more dispersed service areas because of where we are. So that's what I, I'm just, that's just my own opinion. I'm not, I totally agree with you, Rob. I don't think that the northern part of the county, where you've got the chief's group that's head of, what, he's the chief for North County Fire, the city manager's group is the, from one of the cities from North County Fire. I mean, they don't see what we see. And I don't think they're as concerned about it, which is.
Yeah, I would say in some ways they're maybe slightly more siloed, but, you know.
Not to say responsible.
Right, I mean, I would just say, you know.
Right, but what I'm saying is we have to deal with it a different way in some ways.
Most of these guys, if you sent them to, you know, we'll use the fictitious city of Timbuktu, if there's patients that need to be treated, they do it. They don't go, oh, I'm in Timbuktu, I can't treat you.
Right.
They do it, right? And I think that's the part where I was a little surprised, it's like, you know, if we're asking, well, why is this important metal fire? It's like, well, because I'm going into Alameda County on the Dunbar Bridge.
That's my point.
We don't stop at the line and go, oh, now we can't treat you, we treat you.
Well, I can't even believe it on that.
And we don't tell our employees, don't treat, they treat everybody and they don't pay attention to what city they're in, what county they're in, you know, what you look like, what time of day it is, what kind of car, they don't care.
But they have some heartburn over the fact that, anyway, I don't even, how long?
They're in the protocol.
Yes, that's the point, it's that they're not seeing what we see and deal with.
Well, I think, again, you're dealing with people, and I'll be, and Melanie, you can jump in, but. It's not, it's, you know, we're in a real, we're in the real world, okay? The real world is dirty and it's messy and it, you know, things evolve and they happen fast. And, you know, you don't sit there and question things, you just do it and you get it done. And then you ask questions later because it's all about taking care of the patient. So, and thank God, it's the second minutes, you know, hours that we pay attention to and we don't play those games. I think when you get clinical people, people that come out of the clinical environment, which is a much more sanitary, clean, you know, way of going, I mean, it's just not how we work in the field. And sometimes those people are out of sorts. You know, everybody, you know, these shows on television, I'm probably saying more than I should, but, you know, these shows on television where the doctors are in the field and, you know, it's Doogie Howser, they're, they're on their element. They don't get a clue sometimes what they're doing, okay? Because it's not the nice, clean environment that they typically work in. Our environment's not predictable, it's not clean and it's dynamic. And so we don't care where it is, whether we're, you know, we're working at the Oklahoma City bombing or the World Trade Center or Katrina, it doesn't matter. That's the same mentality, you know, if you get a patient, you know what you do and then you ship them to the ER and they take care of their part and we do our part. That's just how it works. And we don't play these games of whose jurisdiction is it? Or we're worried about some protocol, you do what you gotta do and it's done.
I agree, Chuck.
I want to, I want to follow up on what Rob was saying, his assumption here. I live three blocks from Palo Alto. I was under the impression that the chiefs and this group interfered with us cooperating with Palo Alto so that a fire, a medical call could come to my street from Palo Alto.
The chiefs that I would say interfered raised concern that if we sent an engine to Palo Alto, if they were ever on the coverage, which has never happened, that would they then be drawn into Palo Alto versus us?
Do I understand correctly that we then stopped doing that because of their concern?
No, we didn't stop doing it. At that time, what happened was we were still trying to sort out this auto aid agreement for EMS with Palo Alto. Because again, what's complicated about that is they run an ambulance system. And if you remember, at that same time, unfortunately, because they were changing their model in Palo Alto, that's when Mountain View said, we're not gonna do automatic aid with Palo Alto Fire anymore because they're favoring their ambulance system. And our folks then heard, well, they're gonna draw you into more auto aid in Palo Alto than they'll give to you. I mean, reciprocity isn't an even number game, but, you know, you don't want to be abused either. So years ago, I'm the guy that shut off EMS to Palo Alto because they were never gonna come in. Because they only had paramedics on their ambulances and no paramedics on their engines. So it was a lopsided system, right? We'd send an engine to Palo Alto with a paramedic with no expectation, apparently, that you could reciprocate.
But that's not the situation now.
No, but now Chief Nickel and their labor group have worked, you know, hard over the years. So now they have paramedics on every one of their engine companies as well.
So are you saying that we will have an agreement with Palo Alto and we don't care what the JPA or the chief says?
No, I think you gotta care what the JPA says because that's an existing agreement you're gonna be in. But I also wanted to make sure when I wrote this, and I had this discussion with Tim, that nothing in the current agreement precludes us in legal language from having an agreement with Palo Alto.
Why don't we just demand that that's what the agreement?
Well, I think Jim could reiterate it tomorrow when he's there. Because I think, you know, again, they can still, again, they hold all the cards, Director, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. They can say, you know, the EMS JPA can say, or the EMS authority, excuse me, can say, well, you know, wait a minute, we think that's a problem, so we gotta work it out. I don't think they're gonna do it. It sounds like, from everything I'm hearing, they just want to make sure that we cover all of our bases and we're not negatively impacting the San Mateo County system.
Right.
Well, before I go, I just, I want to make sure that my neighborhood is safe. And I'm not gonna leave it up to some bureaucrat in San Mateo County to decide what's okay and what's not okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'd assure you, I mean, we still have a 659 model. I mean, so no matter what, you're getting a unit, you know, when we say safe, I mean, Palo Alto's model is different, we're gonna have to work between the lines and figure that out too with them, so.
So what does that bullet mean and how will that happen? You have no mention to, no mention of cross-county fire agency auto aid.
What it's saying, what it means is, there's no legal, there's no legal prohibition to us doing that. That's within a 13-page group, that's good.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean the EMS authority is just gonna go, oh, you can do it if you get along.
That's what I'm talking about, the imbalance of power.
But that's, they can do that right now.
I know.
But if the EMS authority doesn't have the authority to do that, how could they exercise that authority?
Because they're gonna say, under protocols, our protocols are different than San Mateo County, which I think can now, opening their eyes, or we're doing this on freeways, I don't know how you say that because we're doing it. That's what I tried to point out. I mean, you know, a few years ago, when we got in the slab, nobody realized that even though it was an exclusive operating agreement for AMR in this county, Palo Alto was transporting patients in and out of Stanford Linear Accelerator, which is in San Mateo County.
So the protocols are already different anyway. Some people have Lucas devices and some people don't have Lucas devices, I mean.
Right, that's, that's.
I hate bureaucracy. I just, why do we let this interfere with the safety of our residents?
Let me say, let me say this to you. We're status quo with these agreements. The same political problematic issues that exist today could be there tomorrow, but I would say with one difference. The light has been shined on this whole thing because of this contract. And so, you know, I know Melanie's brought it up, I'm bringing it up, they're hearing it and they realize, we're not gonna stop till we figure this out. So, I mean, and I said that to them, I said, look, I'm glad, okay, there's no prohibition within the agreement, but it's not going away. This isn't gonna end. I said, you know, I got five elected board members here, you know, I know what they want and I know what we want, I know what the right thing to do is. I mean, there shouldn't be, the creek is not a moat and, you know, there should be more cross-border back and forth between ourselves and Palo Alto. Engine 1 is three tenths of a mile from the Palo Alto border. I mean, if we can reach something faster than them and they can do the same for us, then why wouldn't we do it? I mean, that just makes no sense. And I think we're gonna get there, so.
I want to ask a question, Tim. What would happen, Tim, if we did not approve this?
If you did not, well, you don't, you mean the board?
Let me just say, the action regret is to consider and approve. And my question is, if we did not approve, what's the result?
Well, what you're doing is directing, the district is not a party to the, it's a JPA agreement with the county. So you're providing direction to your JPA member of how to vote. So if the direction is, you vote nay, then it depends on what the vote is at the JPA meeting. I mean, you could be the one no, you could be, how many, there was 14?
18.
18. So, I mean, they're just like, they count the votes tomorrow and if it passes, it passes. Even if you say no. So just the numbers, that's a pretty bloodline, but it's a numbers game.
Rob.
Chief, did the board supervisors already vote on this?
No.
Was that too?
They have not. No, so the first thing they vote on is the ambulance agreement.
Yeah, the ambulance.
So we had a meeting, you know, real quick, we had a meeting on the ambulance agreement with eight of the 10 fire chiefs in the room, the county manager, the EMS. agreement with eight of the 10 fire chiefs in the room, the county manager, the EMS authority, including Nancy's boss, which is, trying to remember her name.
Is that, that Louise?
Louise, yeah.
Roberts or Rogers or-
Louise is the head of-
Yeah, but I think she's her Nancy's boss.
So, they ended up explaining what they did and why they did it, and they, you know, essentially in some ways apologized and, you know, and tried to give it, I mean, they finally had a discussion about what happened, which should've happened before all this happened, you know, instead of the shotgun approach that they took. And, you know, in one way, I actually felt bad for them. Because, and it's believable, I went back to my emails and found that they just wanted to extend the agreement at the time that the state would let them do it. They were happy with what they had with the ambulance company, they were happy with what they had with the EMS JPA, so they wanted to just extend. Well, they had to get the whole process. That's kinda where it fell apart. They made bad decisions based upon, you know, these clauses, like they saw the anti-kidnap rules, which I think they made into a bigger deal than it should've been. And this is a partnership. And, you know, so they, they, you know, trying to shove this through the board of supervisors without even having a discussion with us was a bad idea. And I'll, I'll say this, I'm not done with the EMS agency because what they divulged during the meeting was, they don't have a general fund budget. So, the reason they want this $500,000 is because they, they're losing the Maddy funds, which I didn't know what the heck that was, I'll tell you what it is. That's, Maddy funds are basically, was the citations, you probably know, for people getting DUIs and they're having to pay. Well, the system's moving a different way that's not punitive anymore, so we're not making people pay for things and so there's less and less money. Well, that's their funding source. So, they don't, again, they don't have a general fund budget per se. They're doing things through grants and other funds, which seems like a weird way to do something after even having this business for 22 years. And then even the vehicle, they didn't have a vehicle, and even where they are, they're in South San Francisco, which isn't close to the new EOC or South Operation Center building and the dispatch center. So, it seems to me, you know, like I said with the car, I was worried about them responding into the field, because I don't like that. You know, I don't respond into the field. They don't need more people to show up and make it more chaotic and confusing unless there's a need to escalate it that, that you're gonna need those kinds of folks to be there, which I don't consider them on that list. So, but I think they need to go to, or the operations center is a critical function for the county that manages the ambulances, the FRUs, the care facilities, you know, that would be a, a place that they need to be. So, they're not, they're like, you know, at the far end of the county, which is a bad, I don't think a good place for them to be. And then they were paying their own vehicle costs by asking for reimbursement for mileage. So, the whole thing's just that they screwed up that. So, you know, in the end, they explained it, we accepted it. To your point, Rob, the question, you know, they did it in front of the county manager too, who listened to this whole kind of, you know, bad decision, not good decision, bad decision, and oops, should've done this decision, and here we are. And so, nobody, you know, again, AMR, who's opposed to AMR, it was how they did it. And they explained it, they apologized for it, they said they're gonna change it, and we're done. So, that ambulance agreement, nobody, I don't think anybody sat in opposition to it.
Do the chair-
Yes.
Are we ready for a vote here?
Do we need a motion?
Okay, we need a motion?
Do you wanna make a motion?
Unless somebody wanna take the on.
No, go ahead.
Did you call the question?
No, we haven't, we don't even have a motion on the table.
I'd like to call the question.
We don't have a motion on the table. So, would you like, would you like to-
Yeah, I'd make a motion that would approve the San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Service Group Advanced Life Support Paramedic Designation Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you have any last-minute questions, Jim? Because you're representing-
No, I'll be trying to represent this one.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Well, well, we're, we're in a discussion, right?
We've had a discussion.
Well, no, we were asking questions, I don't know.
Go ahead. I mean-
Well, let me, let me just say, I, I, I can't under, this whole thing baffles me. I can't understand why we would be interested in participating in this. Why would we let somebody else say, oh, you can't have that equipment. It might help the safety of your residents, it might be good for their health or save their life, but you can't do that because we say so. I, I just don't understand why we would hurt our residents based on some bureaucrat. I can't understand why a bureaucrat would even wanna stop us. As long as we have the minimum equipment, why do they care what we put on, on a vehicle? Why, why would they care? It's just none of their business, except it's the problem with bureaucrats. They've gotta stick their nose into someone else's business just 'cause that's the kinda things they do. So, that's one thing. The second thing is, this thing could be generating, and nobody knows, this bothers me, I think it's dirty frankly, this could be generating $100 million in revenue for AMR in this county, easily. And we're sitting here talking about $500,000 and so forth. We don't, the fact that we don't even have an idea of how many calls they go on, how much revenue they bill, what they're earning from this, and we're, and they're, and they're saying, after 10 years, we're gonna give you whatever it is, 3% more, or, you know, some little tiny dribbles. And we say, okay, whatever, we're so grateful for these few pennies from heaven. Why would we do that? Where's our dignity? Where's our belief in our, what, what our residents need? I, I, I just can't understand why we're interested in this at all. It's dirty, the, the executive director is a former AMR employee, he sits in the office at his AMR offices. What, where does this happen in the public arena where this kind of behavior is all right? I don't understand, and I for, I personally don't wanna have anything to do with what seems to me bad form, bad function, the whole thing just reeks. The fact that they would wanna limit us, the fact that we still may have to deal, I won't have agreements with other agencies. I'd like to talk to agencies where we've got a cooperative arrangement and work out something that's in our mutual interest. If it's not in our mutual interest, we move on. If there's somebody that doesn't wanna provide good equipment for their residents, we don't wanna deal with them, let's get rid of them. So, I'm making a strong pitch for us to go there and vote no, and have to say, until you fix this up, or until we do a new agreement, a new JPA, until we have a vote that is representative of what we're putting in here, and I've recommended that maybe the vote, the votes ought to be based on the number of FRUs that we put in there. It's our contribution, why shouldn't our vote be based on our investment? And that is our investment. Anyway, I, 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 I think we should restructure this whole thing, we should find the partners we wanna be partners with, we should get rid of the partners we don't wanna be partners with. And I'm, I'm gonna vote against the motion. I, I don't want, I'm hoping Jim will vote against it, I'm hoping we authorize him to vote against this.
I just, it, to keep the conversation, I, I think, you know, we're burdened with this 201 restriction-
Not 201 rights.
Right. That restricts us from operating the ambulance. Just my exposure to the system, what I've learned about it, I, I would like to see us operate in ambulances ourselves within the district, but we're prohibited from doing it.
No, we're not, 'cause Woodside does it.
No, they're part of AMR.
Yeah, it's just, there, there are so many, the rules are easy, it's the exceptions that kill ya. You know, and when you study this, and, I would like to see in time, the, you know, 201 rights restored.
That's a state.
It is a state. It, it'll be, it'll require state legislation. And I hope that, I hope things move in that direction. My two cents.
Well-
Yep.
My one fifth. He were the sole bidder, right, Chief?
Yep.
I mean, there isn't another solution, and it's part of the entire San Mateo County public response system, right? I mean, it's like building, building a whole bunch of cards and then pulling out the bottom if we don't resp, uh, represent the JPA. And to follow up what Jim said, we need a one-to-three-year plan. If we're gonna go and attempt to run our own ambulances and set this in motion, we need at least a three-year plan in order to integrate the personnel that we need relative to, to transporting. It's illegal with the 201 rights, Chief, right? So-
You have to have an agreement with AMR, which is what, uh, Woodside does.
Right, and-
Right, and they're still gonna bill the rate they're gonna bill and you'll do the service for less probably, or nothing.
And it's not the best contract. I totally agree with you, Chuck, but, I mean, it's the only shell in town, and do you have, do you have a, an immediate solution for what July 1st this contract runs?
Yeah.
I don't think there is one. Other than AMR is the sole bidder, and the chief with the county manager has worked out an agreement with the first one, and the second one is being worked on now, right?
Right, so the designation agreement, I mean, it's what Director Bernstein said, I mean, I don't disagree with what he's saying. The only thing that I would say is, we don't have the legal authority. So, you know, at the end of the day, the county has that. In the perfect world, we had those controls, this would be completely, a completely different decision. And you could pick your fires, you could dictate your terms, but you don't get to do that.
Well, that was my last point. We don't even have the legal authority. Even if we do vote, it still goes to the JPA for a vote.
Right.
So, we really don't have the legal authority.
This is a deal we could cut right now.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And it's not a perfect deal, I agree.
Right, it's not.
It's, it's, it's actually, until we can change the structure, which I, I've always said to be an uphill battle, this is the best I think we can do. I get where you're coming from, Chuck, but I just don't see any other way without costing more money.
Virginia?
Jim.
I, I just wanted to comment, I, I wanna thank the chief and Melanie and, and you. I mean, you had a lot of involvement with, you know, the jurisdictions. I don't think we would have the agreement that we have without, you know, your work and involvement. So, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jim. Chuck, yeah?
Yeah, and I'll second that too. I think where we are is a lot better than where we were a month ago, and I'm not in any way ungrateful for the work that you've put into it. I just feel a little bit like I'm walking down a dark street and a stick-up guy comes and says, give me all your money. And I say, no, and he says, well, how about half your money? And I say, okay.
Right. It's not a perfect-
We're getting robbed here, and there are better solutions. And you know what? We won't work on them if you don't work on them, so.
Well, you know, the ideal, in my opinion, the ideal solution would be is that the fire agencies provide transport. The problem is, you have to get everybody to agree, and then you're gonna run into, we could all do it for less money, but then, some agencies have to do, you know, to the penny cost recovery, as I've been exposed to when I go, you know, meet with South San Francisco with Virginia, and you got, you know, those people up there who think that if you're losing money, that's a bad thing. Well, what does that mean, losing money? You know what I mean? That means the fee is less to the taxpayer who's already paying you for a service typically.
And the firefighters and the paramedics are members of the same union.
Right.
But they had other concerns too. They're, they're same concerns for, you know, subsidizing. This is, again, going back to Auto Aid versus subsidies, they had concerns about subsidies.
Sure, because they're responding to the ambulance in a different jurisdiction.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? So, there's, there's no straight line. A straight line would be is if you have your own jurisdiction and the counties had said, everybody, which is what we hope for, you got it. If you wanna do your own ambulance transport, have at it. Well, they didn't do it, they gave it to the counties for consistency, but in terms of complexity, they raised the complexity up too, so.
I just wanna ask a question from what you're saying. And it's not in any timeframe for right now, so I'm not asking about for right now. But when they put out the RFP for the ambulance service-
Yeah.
Could our district have bid on that and bid, bid the successful bidder?
Only if you bid on the whole county.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Robert?
Do we have a motion on the table?
You calling the question? Are you gonna call the question? We'll go, okay.
We have a motion in the second, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna close discussion and let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a bad deal for our residents.
Jim, so tomorrow night-
To the minutes, this is a bad arrangement for our residents.
So, tomorrow night, Jim, you'll be representing the district, and if you wanna bring this with you, go ahead. And I think it is, it's the best that we can do for the residents in our district without skyrocketing costs.
Can I say again, yeah, thanks to Melanie for all the hard work. I mean, again, she worked through a 30-page agreement only to have it tossed. And then, you know, all the other meetings that I drug her to, so I appreciate all that hard work. And then, you know, to, to, obviously what Director Bernstein just said, and what was discussed, you know, don't forget, Director McGlaughlin tomorrow is only voting on this item, but in the future, the structure of the JPA is something that you probably wanna continue to pursue modifications to how it works and what it looks like and so forth. So, that's not a done deal either, other than that might be a steep slope to climb too.
Yeah, it will definitely be. Okay, going on to item 16, consider and discuss integration of the Shake Alert System, an area-wide communication emergency notification system. Harold?
So, I got Chief Stevens and Ryan Zoloff are here, and obviously, you know, we wanted to give you an update on what's going on. And, you know, I know there's some concerns about what's been done and how it was done, and who we're working with, and what we're dealing with. But, you know, I think moving forward, you know, for certainty, we know we own all of our own property, and those are places where we could install these units. I think these are, as we've seen with the combination Shake Alert and, you know, area-wide alerting device. We don't always wanna say LRAD, that's one vendor, but at the end of the day, that is the vendor that we have for the mobile unit. The mobile unit's been, I think, helpful to a certain degree. We found out in highly vegetative and terrain areas that a 30-foot mast doesn't put you above the tree line, and you're gonna get muffled sound in certain areas, whereas in other places, like in East Palo Alto, it's gonna be more wide open. You can, you know, 30-foot mast isn't a bad thing, and obviously in a station like we have there, we have a monopole that's 100 feet, you know, who knows what the capability of that device would be? I was looking at some of the old records the other day, finding out information on Station Two, or, excuse me, on Station Four, and found out that when they installed an alarm horn or notification horn for the volunteers in East Palo Alto, you could hear it two miles away. So, you know, that was back then, of course, this is now, but at the same time, maybe that's the case in an open area. The other thing that we ran into, and I'm not gonna get specific as to agencies that we've had difficulty with, but, you know, not everybody's in support. They're concerned about, you know, oh, is this a shared partnership? Do you want us to pay something? You know, this is kind of our responsibility, you know, why wouldn't we just use, you know, some of the other more electronic common devices? You know, this is one more thing that needs maintenance, who's in charge of that? What's that gonna cost in the future? How does it work? Do we get to control it? You know, what are the protocols and so forth? And some of those we've shared, like with Atherton, who I think is the easier, easier, you know, understanding for them, because we have an existing system, that some of those things are there. But, you know, even amongst some of the elected officials, or even, you know, like the managers and police chiefs, we've run into, you know, I'm just saying, we're in East Palo Alto, I mean, the police chief whispered in my ear, if we get any complaints for this demo, I'll have them, you know, have them call your office, you know what I mean? You know, Robert and I were talking about it, nobody complained. You know what I mean? So, it's this belief that it's a negative versus a positive, that people are gonna be unhappy versus see the benefit. Those are all hills you gotta climb and things you gotta get resolved. And so, I'll leave it, you know, let Ryan and Jim talk a little bit about what they've, what they've been doing. But, you know, again, I think building out the system to what we can do now, and then seeing what it can do, and then figuring out what is left to do, is probably the next best approach, just because that's the easiest, I think, most straightforward. It's in our patrol right now. You know, I was telling Virginia today that, you know, as we're looking for shared, and I'm sorry, Carrie left, is we're looking for shared projects with all of our partners, you know, Atherton has an old communications tower, you know, I don't know if people would say, on Almond Row, they wanna, you know, they want this device on top of a non-existent pole that we'd have to put above the tree. But maybe partnering with Atherton on their old infrastructure for communications that equally can benefit us, there would be one of those marriages where at their new city center, 'cause they're not planning to replace that com tower, we can do that, right? We could work with them on that and put an LRAD device there and on that. So, I think there's opportunities out there to do things like that, that maybe even every station we have, you may or may not get community buy-in or approval. It's gonna be easier on newer facilities. Again, East Palo Alto has a 100-foot monopole, which I think ideal just to start there and see what does that look like. But, you know, again, I'll leave it to Jim and Ryan, they've been, they've been doing some of the testing around, they've been dealing with the vendors, and they know much more about, you know, how the system operates and how you can integrate than I do, so.
Jim?
Sure. Well, first off, one of the first things we did with the, with the trailer, the mast notification trailer, is we put together a plan for how we would deploy it and use it as a, as an active piece of equipment now. We didn't just get the piece of equipment so that we could do random testing. Then, after we put it in service- Then after we put it in service as a usable frontline unit, then we started to go around the district and try to confirm its capabilities. I mean, it's easy for the vendor to say that there's an 850-meter, 360-degree broadcast, but put it in a stand of trees and you don't get that. And that's, we had that, that basic understanding, but we went out and confirmed it. We went into Atherton and then it, actually on Almond Drawl, and tested it in an area where there's a lot of trees. We didn't get that kind of, we didn't get the performance that it's rated at. But we moved it up to Station Four. We put it on an uphill slope above the rest of the area, and we actually got that type of performance, because we weren't obstructed by trees or high buildings, that kind of thing. So, the capabilities, the capabilities is a general statement of 850 meters, but it depends on your conditions, right? So, certainly if we looked at a system to where we put it on fixed sites, sites that we can, that we can either obtain through partnership or that we can count on, which we already own, then you can, you can bring it above the tree line. You can, you can go with a higher mast, and you can achieve the 850 meters. I'm not an expert on acoustic devices. This is, this is me applying some common sense and going out there and trying to gain some experience. But certainly, as another layer to a mast notification system, it is a tool that we can consider.
Ryan, do you have anything?
I mean, I think that from the chief's perspective too, in the presentation we gave at Station Two with the Shake Alert, that from the Midwest and knowing there are tornadoes there and how old audible systems as far as mast notifications work that, this kind of looks like a smart alert system, where if you tie it to Shake Alert, and with that capability to do mast notification to the community, gives them a plausible perspective as far as maybe to stop operations temporarily if they're going to absorb some earthquake or seismic activity. So, tying that in with the Shake Alert provides an enhanced value as far as early warning modification that I haven't seen in a Bay Area, as far as any other municipalities that are doing this to this degree. So, it's pretty impressive.
And we think Station Two's the place to do it. We still have to get approval from Shake Alert to do that. We think that's a good starting point. You know, the irony was, again, looking back through some of the records on these different things, is we used to do notifications, again, for volunteers. We used to have a noon time horn downtown where the main station was, was on Merrill Street. And, you know, even some of the complaints where we did, we used to do, I guess, an eight o'clock system test every day. And sort of general public complained back in the 40s and 50s that that was waking them up. So, if we could just discontinue doing that on weekends, that would be a great thing. So, we, again, we used to do what we're doing, only we didn't have all the reasons, you know, that we're, you know, we're moving towards today. And I think having the acoustics where it speaks, you know, again, that equally, the alert tone is easier to hear than sometimes when you start to have the message. And we had Director Bernstein ask about the messages. We had a number of pre-canned messages that, you know, we could use now. And the big three really is going to be earthquake, fire, and flood are the three big things that we have as susceptibility for the fire district. And I think you guys have pre-recorded all of it, right?
There is pre-recorded messages. With the mobile device though, there's a, the value I see in that mobile device is you can deliver a message on the fly. You can sound an alert, which is a tone, and then you can deliver an audible message that's clear to the 850 meters in the right conditions, obviously, where you can deliver directions if you need to. If, for example, if you need to evacuate a certain area, you can move that trailer into that area and you can start to give directions. This is not without obstacles, okay? You know, we don't have existing agreements with enough sites to give a large coverage to the district. We really can only plan for the sites that we have control over, which we have a good partnership with Cal Water. That's why we have an existing site right at Bear Gulch Reservoir. We have our seven stations that we can put, that we can put units on. So, we can count on those eight sites. I used one vendor, we didn't go out for a quest for proposal, but I used one vendor to get a general idea of what are we really looking at dollar-wise and if this is anything that we even truly want to entertain. And you were looking at, for the sites we can count on, the eight sites that you can count on, you're looking at $800,000. So, and it doesn't really cover the majority of the district. It covers a lot of area, but it depends on what level of coverage you're looking for for alerting. And then I think you have to remember that this is not the only alerting system. This is another layer to an overall system such as SMC Alert and so forth, Reverse 911, those kinds of systems that are already in place.
So, what you have, excuse me, two chairs.
Yeah.
So, what's the handout that was given us regarding mapping? Was this a mapping that...
I asked a vendor, I said, "Look, if I can get you to tell me with this device, on a facility mounting, on the eight facilities that we can, that we can count on being able to put a unit on, what kind of coverage I would get?" And it's based on 850 meters, which is, which is a half a mile radius.
Which one are you referring to?
Which map? There are two maps.
But which one is the one you're...
I'm referring to the one that has only the eight, ten sites.
Okay.
And that's the coverage you would get with the half-mile radius on the eight sites that we know we can put a unit on. The other one, probably shouldn't have been in the report, probably should have been included in the, in the report, but they were considered potential sites that we feel like we have relationships there that would allow us to be successful at getting access to being able to put a unit. And that's why that was included.
So, for example, Menlo Park just put in a new 120-foot monopole at their police station. You know, that's a better, that's a better location than here where, you know, we're going to have to take the tower apart. Even if we build a new training facility, it's not going to be that tall. So, and they're a public safety entity, but to Jim's point, you'd need to have an agreement, there'd need to be approval. This is the one where, you know, it's paying upon who you talk to, and you've heard of, I'm not telling you anything new, is are we paying or they paying? And then how's that, you know, how's that going to work, right? And you get into those things, which then leads to, I'm not going to say difficulty, but this kind of question, right? Is this, is this a good thing or a bad thing? And, you know, what are you guys doing? And isn't notification really our function? Because we're the city, and, you know, if you go by the standard emergency operation stuff, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, that's really mass notifications under law enforcement, and it's really a city function versus a special district function under fire. So, you know, I mean, it's just, it's all solvable. It's, some of it's politics, some of it's practicality, but all of it is, you know, it's all about relationships, right? It's all about relationships. And selling others on what we see as a good solution. And I do mean sell.
Yeah, I was, I was re-elected last November, and one of the things that I ran on is this idea of an alerting system. To me, this is really important. I know it's very unpopular to say things like this, but our emergency agencies have done a horrendous job of alerting the public. We saw down in San Jose when they had the flood, people almost died because nobody had any warning. We saw people dead in their cars because they didn't get a warning up in the North County. And there were so many good reasons they didn't get a warning. Oh, we don't want to scare the poor people. We're just going to let them die on the way to the car instead. I mean, what, how can we do that and be responsible? It seems to me we need an alerting system, and this idea of the SMC alert thing, I have it, but it is the stupidest thing. I mean, if I care that a deer is crossing the road in Hillsborough, I get that warning that there's a dead deer on the road. But what good does that do to me? It's just not a system at all. We care about our residents, we care about this area, and I think we should have a plan where these concentric circles, on average, I realize that the terrain makes a difference, but on average, 850, you know, radius or whatever, and we cover this whole thing as a plan, and then we go out and sell it to the public. And I know from my CERT work, when I talk to people, everybody's interested in some sort of alert. I've never heard anybody say, "Oh, gosh, I don't want to be warned about a flood." I know in East Palo Alto, it was a huge deal when that, when that levee was threatened, and people had no warning. And in Menlo Park, we had this absolute idiot of a police chief who had a secret plan for evacuation, which he wasn't going to tell anybody because he was worried about them. And so, nobody, that was one of the problems of just an alarm system, a siren, is we warn the people that something has to happen, but then they don't know what to do, and they panic. This gives us the opportunity to say, "Hey, there's a problem, and here's what you do." Give them a place to go and where to evacuate. And this idea we can have a Plan A and Plan B in the event that the first place is not functional, so we go to the second. This seems to me like the highest and most important thing we can do. The police departments aren't going to do this. The only agency that has the ability to do this district-wide is our agency, and I think that we need to just take that on. I agree, we're going to have to ask people. But I don't know what the rules are. Am I allowed to put up a 100-foot antenna in my yard and volunteer my house as a location for this? I don't know what the laws are about that, but I think we could research it and find out. We could go to the schools and say, "Hey, do you want one out in your playing field or do you not want one?" You know, the school district could decide. It seems to me we've got a lot of audiences. I bet companies would care about warning their employees. I think, you know, public agencies would. There's all sorts of things. We could put one of these on top of the Four Seasons Hotel and probably broadcast the entire Willows from up there. I mean, it seems to me that this, and we shouldn't make them afraid of money. Let's just tell them we're going to pay for it. It's cheap. We probably could cover the whole area with 30 of these things at $100,000. It's really not very much money. We could do that. And we would have a system that everybody could get involved with. I don't know. I just think that it's really important, and I would think, rather than being afraid or somebody's a little worried about it, I mean, I think there's some issues about not hurting somebody's hearing, for example. That's a real issue. But once we figure out what's, what we need to do about that, it just seems to me this is something that all of our residents or the vast majority of them would really care about, because in the end, their lives depend on this. And we've got more concern about wildland fires now. Salt in the hills is important. Down in the flatlands where I live, we've got flooding concerns. This is just an essential kind of thing to do. I don't know. I just think we need to go forward full speed.
So, I know that this is not a recommendation, so there's no action to be taken on it.
It just says the direct staff.
Right.
Yeah, we're at that point. I mean...
Yeah, but Jim, sorry.
Just as a comment, I don't disagree with you at all. I think there needs to be a little more comprehensive look at it to determine what those ideal sites, additional ideal sites would be. But I think one of the things that can be said is that success has a tendency to build success. So, what you do have control over is you have control over eight sites. If you successfully move forward with eight sites, begin that public education program that will educate people on, hey, this is what it means when you hear this tone, this is what reaction we should be getting out of you when you hear this tone, and start that process. Then we start that synergy towards building a bigger success. And in fact, it may be a whole lot easier to gain those partners once we've established some success within our own organization. That's just a thought.
Ron?
Yep. It says here, $818,000, $818,000, $818,000, not $100,000.
$100,000 for you.
Well...
No, I think it's...
Eight sites. So, if you were to break it down...
Yeah. Oh, I thought it was 800...
No, for that part, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
If you wanted every district facility to... But that's the unit, that's not necessarily the pole. Correct me if I'm wrong, right? We don't...
No, that's mounted, installed, everything.
But mounted on an existing...
On an existing site.
Right.
So, you would do rooftop mount for stations. For the, for our existing 100-foot pole, we'd take advantage of that.
It's not going to be $100,000.
For Bear Gulch, we would use, well, we'd actually want to raise the pole at Bear Gulch.
So, again, there's some additional cost to get elevation. The easiest thing here to do is, I think, one of the first ones is, let's get it on top of the 100-foot monopole at Station Two, see what it can do connected to the LRAD or connected to the Shake Alert, and then I think, you know, there's another, like Jim said, there's a selling point, that if the community gets an alert tone with a countdown that an earthquake's coming, I think it's going to be like cookies. Everybody's going to want cookies, you know what I mean? When they find out that's possible, why wouldn't you want that?
And to, can you centralize control?
Yes.
Like if we put it all in the, at the eight locations? Can we centralize what has to, to control it? And how's that done?
They actually have cloud-based technology. With this, with this particular...
Is it wireless or...?
It is wireless.
It is wireless.
But there's also a manual backup to it.
Is it hardwired also?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's a manual backup. There's also a manual kill. There's actually a manual kill in case there was an accidental alarm. But you've got to remember though, this, this was me getting information from an existing vendor that I have a relationship with, so that, well, not a relationship with, but we've purchased from him in the past. So, I, it was an easy contact to get a dollar amount for this concept. Certainly, we're going to have to follow the rules of purchasing within the district and...
No, Jim, that's not...
We may have competitive bids.
No, I just had the question about, you know, the centralized control and how it is controlled. And if it's a hardwired system and also a cloud-based or wireless, is it 802.11 A&amp;B?
I'm sorry?
Is it 802.11 A&amp;B? That's usually what wireless is, like common wireless. It's not like the high range is like 820, 825 or...
I don't have an answer to that.
So, at Station Two, Shake Alert is hardwired, and it uses two, it uses two different systems. I know one's A&amp;T, I can't, A&amp;T, I can't remember what the other one is. So, there's a redundancy if one fails, hopefully the other one stays up.
Okay.
But that's what we would do there.
Wireless and hardwired?
Yeah, we're not proposing wireless, because as you know, the Hawaiian situation and the vulnerability and encryption and, you know, the false signaling, that's a little, you get a little, it's a little scary. That's why we said, "Hey, we're rather than hardwired than right now, somebody's sending a signal that we don't know how they gained access to our system, but that's a possibility." So, thank you.
In the wake of the fires, I believe the legislature put together a task force to examine these issues.
Right.
Aren't they producing a report that comes up?
I haven't seen anything yet. I brought a, I brought a vendor in, I took around two weeks ago, who's an expert in this stuff, and all communications. And so, we discussed this. In fact, he actually met with Alejandro, who's the Sky Alert representative and is the guy that did that interface. So, I don't, I know they spoke their language, but, you know, yeah, we're bringing, we brought some other people in to address other needs, which are high-level communication infrastructure issues.
Thank you for that. And the question I had was, what's happening on the county level with regard to emergency alert systems?
They're interested in this system, but they have, some weren't able to attend the demo that we had. But we're inviting them again to come to the Station Six. Of that, because on the dedication day, we're going to do it again, because Station Six equally has Shake Alert in it. So, Station Six right now, Station Two, both, we haven't put it out, but both stations have it. And I just got, day before yesterday, from John Hitchcock, a proposal to do the rest of the fire stations, with the exception of Station Four, which would be at a lower
of the fire stations, with the exception of Station Four, which would be at a lower level, because it won't open doors and turn off, there's no smart systems in the old buildings. But it would give you the countdown.
I would just say that I'm not ready to buy off on a single system right now. There's a lot of activity in this area at the state level and the county level. I think, as was mentioned, there's a lot of alternatives, there's a lot of ways to do alert systems, and I think it's important that whatever we use is compatible with what's used by our neighboring cities and county, and that it's part of a system that will work as a system when it's needed, so that when you're broadcasting evacuation routes and whatnot, that it's done in a coordinated, systematic way. And I think this area is evolving very, very rapidly, and I think, I think it'd be premature to sign off on a single system at this point.
Actually, I would, not to go against that, but I would say, if you're going to do anything, I'd put it, again, at Station Two, coordinate with the Shake Alert, you know, as a beta test, because I'm, you know, I'm torn like you, because there's things moving, but I also know how things happen and things don't happen, and, you know, it's paralysis by analysis. I mean, I'm somewhere between Director Bernstein wanting to build out the whole district and then, you know, not doing anything and waiting for the state to do something, because I can tell you by doing the Shake Alert, we waited for three years and finally, you know, we said, "We'll pay it." Was that the problem? I mean, that, you know, Ryan was involved with that. We finally had to push them over the edge.
So I just wanted to make a comment to what you were talking about as far as the counties. The only alert warning notification systems that everybody is using is the SNC Alert, the IPOS, the Integrated Public Alert Warning System, and then WEED, which is Wireless Emergency Alerts. So everybody's on these different capability platforms where it's all tech, you know, the earphone. The state's looking to have you out versus register, so that we can increase our memberships as far as those that are registered within the area. They did send out a state alert warning notification guidelines, the state is pushing that out. But as far as siren capabilities or mobile mass notifications systems, the only agency that I know that has an LRAD, a mobile LRAD, is handling that in the Cloud City as far as the fire department there. So the mass notifications and the siren capabilities does not exist in any municipality in our area. They're all using IPOS, SNC Alert, Nixle, Twitter, Facebook, Nextdoor, all social media applications. This is just another layer as far as mass notifications and actually alert warning tied into a Shake Alert system that will give you that scientific information too.
And the state OES guy actually showed up at our Station Two event.
Yeah.
Because they're watching what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, because they don't know what we do. That's why, you raise good questions, but I think as they've gotten to this point, they're not sure what this is supposed to look like either, so...
I want to ask Paul with Ryan, because I was under the understanding that all along the coastline, the tsunami warning system is all an audio system.
It's a horn system.
Horn system, yeah. Well, that's what we're talking about, in part.
The LRAD is, it communicates, talks.
Also, but it's also, but, but the tsunami system, there's only one emergency that it's preparing for, and...
Right.
That's, I mean, that exists right now.
Yeah, that's, the horn goes off and start driving the opposite...
You go uphill, yeah.
Yeah. Similar to our, the Bear Gulch one, but not to this capability with the voiceover command, pre-scripted messages, and actually being a network of different nodes.
Let me say, I think there could be a lot of strategies, and I'm not sure what the right strategy is, but I just wanted to suggest a counter to what you said, Jim, for a different reason. Imagine for a moment if we tested out, not only in East Palo Alto, but we tested out, say, at Walsh Road, and we had a system that would warn people of wildland fire. And lo and behold, there's a wildland fire, it comes over the hill, the alarm goes off, and all the Atherton residents evacuate, and thirty Melo Park residents die. And we said, "Well, we were testing." I think the danger is, when we do it partway and we could have made a difference to more people, I think there's a risk we take, and I just urge you to think about, what happens if there was a real emergency and we hadn't done it elsewhere, we were still going very slow? We're talking about three million, I mean, thirty machines, three million dollars, it's not very much money, given how much we...
Right, the number of machines is not really the issue, it's gaining access to the properties to put them on. That's the issue.
And the right location.
All I was suggesting is that your bird in the hand is your aid facilities.
And just to, you know, somewhat separate, the system we have with Atherton and Walsh, we know we've got to change its location because we hear that people can't, you know, it's not as effective as everybody wishes it was. That's kind of where we started with this whole LRAD system, was we knew with the siren, it just wasn't doing what we needed to do, so, you know, could we move it somewhere else too, to make it more effective? And we went with, at that time, the easy, right? They, we got a donated power pole, they could give us power there, we split the cost with Atherton, so it was all this really, you know, because money was an issue for some of the partners, and so it was as good as you get from nothing, and now we're looking at trying to upgrade that site specifically. Could you put it up on the hill versus down in the bowl, where it gets lost, no matter what you do, in the trees, you're going to lose the sound? If we could put it on top of the hill, you know, we all know it would probably work a lot better. I mean, we just go by our recent experience with Facebook's Audible Alarm Notification System at their new building, Building Twenty-One, when they were testing that, or we all from Bill Knight and the Delhaver residents, who complained, sound travels outward and then drops down, right? As also an issue with shoreline and the fog and the sound dropping down in Mountain View or San Jose. I mean, so we know what, if we can get up higher, it's going to be more effective, you know, which is another reason, again, putting it on top of the existing firehouse at thirty feet is not going to be probably good enough. We're going to need to have poles. Like I said, Station Two, we have everything we need right there. All we need to do is just put one system in, and then that's going to answer a lot of these unknowns.
So you need from us, what, direction for the next step to get approval from, to seek approval from you as GS?
Well, we've already asked for that approval to keep moving, and then I believe in this next budget, we do have a line item budget for some of these devices, so...
So what's the, what's the direction?
I mean, it'd be nice of you to say, "Keep going," and we're, we'll move at a method, you know, again, we're going to try and move at a methodical pace. It won't be district-wide, but we'll work off of our existing facilities, we'll do, you know, again, one at a time, so we're going to measure, and we'll make sure we're working with the state as well, because hopefully, you know, what we're doing, they adopt. I mean, when I saw the OES guy there, I realized, oh, I know what he did. They don't know what they're doing either.
No, but I think the direction is to do it at the local level, and I'm anxious to see what his task force report, and I believe we're close to release date for that.
We'll see what they say. I think they're going to be going with sirens, but we'll...
Chuck?
Do we need permission from the jurisdictions to put up a pole?
You mean at our stations? Not at our station?
He says yes, sorry.
Oh, at our station.
Yeah, once you go over a certain height, you're going to need, you know, some sort of variance to put it up. Yeah, because the cell companies ran into that too, right? And Atherton has a restriction, I believe they're one of them.
I just didn't know if there was an exemption for public safety agencies.
We're subject to the same permitting.
Yeah.
Melo Park, everybody else is, if we changed one of our HVAC units, we'd have to go in for permitting.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed. I mean, I'm more anxious, I guess, than my fellow board members, but I'd like to proceed and then...
I think we're all anxious, but go, so you're making a motion?
Yes.
A second.
Okay, last call.
Can I clear on the motion?
Well, the chief asked for direction, that they continue in the direction they're going, testing this out, putting the plan together and so forth, and I'd like to just encourage them to do that. So my motion is really to encourage them to go in the direction they're going.
To keep going.
To keep going.
Does that include surveying, you know, alternative approaches and...
I don't think it includes purchasing any equipment at this point, it just means...
But it means it focuses...
Putting the plan together.
All the LRAD system?
For right now, yes.
And I would like to see it be more than LRAD. I'd like to see it compared to other systems. I'd like to see LRAD compared to other systems.
I agree with that. I think they should...
I think that, help me to, I think you did it last year?
We did. So we bought the LRAD system, we went around and we had, we actually had a company contact us afterwards, I think, it was what, Federal Siren that contacted us, because they saw the information, they saw it in the newspaper that we'd done this test. We looked into everybody else that makes a device, there is no such other thing that exists like an LRAD system. There are sirens, there are pneumatics. LRAD is the only thing out there like this.
What, can I, I sell a rad, and I, to be honest, I'm not sold on the Audible. I used to work in San Francisco, they tested it once a month, and I had trouble, it would go off and it sounded...
But I don't think it was this one, right?
I don't know.
Because this is, so you know the history of this, you can look it up too on the website, but, you know, this comes out of the United States military, so the federal government's tested this for a lot of different purposes that has nothing to do with, you know, mass notification, I mean...
But I guess my concern is, if we're signing up on LRAD, we're saying, "This is the best alert system available, you know, for our district."
Well, and right now...
Now and into the foreseeable future.
Right, just like where Federal Siren was up on the hill when we bought it, we couldn't find any other device, because the LRAD wasn't even known then, so we went around and we tried, and we, you know, we looked at different devices, and that siren was the best that we could get at the time.
And when I say alternatives, I want to, I'm not talking just about, you know, the sirens and the LRAD-type systems, but what else is available?
Like, is it...
Whether it's on cell phones or whether it's, I know in tornado country, they have the little, you know, battery-powered radios, that alarm goes off, you know, a tornado is coming, head for the cellar. So I, I'm looking for, I would like to see a broader examination. I think we're kind of locked in on a specific...
So to let you know on that, the reason we did that was because the other areas, the county, just kind of established, they're the ones that would purchase it, they're the ones that would do it. For example, Melo Park used to have its own notification system, but over time, it was in conflict with what the county was doing, so we've tried to step back away from those types of things where others are already doing it, and find where's the, where's the sweet spot, where we see some other technology that can be part of the solution, but not every part of it. In the case of Melo Park, what the county was doing, they actually shut down the phone system, because you can't do like a forty thousand-person notification to the phone system at the same time their weather system does it, because then it takes the whole thing down. So they found out that multiple entities doing the same thing was not a good idea, and then the Melo Park realized the county was going to pay for it, so they didn't have to. So they've since abandoned, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan?
My board connects.
Blackboard, that was it, they've abandoned that.
Rob, did you have a question?
That's what I was going to talk about, right there.
So we stay out of this.
Well, the coordination, Jim brings up a good point, so does Chuck, I mean, we need something. It hasn't been really coordinated with the Emergency Preparedness Council for the county, right? We're not even a member of that, correct?
Yeah.
A sitting member.
Well, actually, Ryan's the, Ryan's the chair of the Emergency Managers Group for the whole county, right?
Yeah, but you're talking about the JPE San Mateo Council.
Right. We're not even a member of that.
Yeah, our, our partners are. Each municipality is...
Right, our partners are, but us as a fire district isn't.
Correct. But it goes to those meetings because he represents the city, because they pay for us to be there.
Yeah, he doesn't represent the fire district, does he?
No, but he works for the fire district, so we find out the information anyway.
Wordsmithing, okay? I mean, and we're doing this, this siren system or notification system, and they have, they don't even recognize the special districts, and not only including us, but Co-Side and Woodside Fire, they don't even, they don't even recognize us as an emergency management partner, because we're not even part of the county organization. So that kind of upsets me a little bit, and there's, and what you just said, there's no coordination between the city and the county and us and the other special districts. You know, I don't know what the solution is to that.
Leadership.
I've been, I've been bringing this up, I think, for eight years. I mean, ever since I've been on the board, I'm trying to figure out if there's a disaster, who's in charge? Who's running the command center? Who's making the calls relative, if it's an earthquake, everyone's going to be affected? But if it's a small fire or maybe the creek overflows, are you going to be in charge as a fire chief?
Fire will, not, she's going to be in charge.
Right, but the ultimate responsibility would fall, I don't know, between the city Palo Alto and the city Melo Park. So, wow, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be done.
Yeah, and there's the political side, which I stay out of, and then there's the operational side where we insert people in there, so at least we have, you know, eyes and ears, but equally leadership. I mean, you know, here, tonight you've heard you've got Melanie in charge of stuff, working with the county, even though it's not necessarily in the agreement. You've got Ryan working in a contract with the city, even though, like you said, we're not recognized as a district, but we've got our emergency manager in there. I mean, there's, so we figure out ways to solve for that, and then on calls, I mean, yeah, we're out there and we're going to do what needs to get done, and we're typically the ones that, you know, they look to, because then they'll say, "Well, you guys have been all over the country on different disasters." That's right, so we know how to connect dots and make things happen. We're, I guess, fortunate that way. That's the benefit of going to all the different disasters that we're going through. You're right, Rob. I mean, look, at the end of the day, you know, and I don't know, you know, you know, we had that discussion at the special meeting, but having one senior EOC here, shared, turnkey, ready to go, a group of emergency management professionals that, you know, serve all the jurisdictions that we have, is the way to do this, and I think that's, that's in your power to solve, because those proposals are right there. You know, we have a facility we can build here, we're going to need to redo it anyway, so, you know, I'm not going to say I got you a perfect answer, but I think I have a part of the solution to fix it going forward, you know, build it, and they will come, and equally, you know, help them do the things that quite honestly, they don't know what they're doing, and that's because they've never had to do it in many cases. You know, and if you look at just Melo Park as an example, you know, what's Starla confronted with, she's now the new manager, and she's got fifty new department heads, you know, what's Ryan confronted with in an agreement? He's got to train them all, plus he's got three new council members over there who don't know what their role is supposed to be, right? So, I mean, you know, again, and that's going to constantly change too, so, I mean, you know, we can solve for the things I think that are easier as kind of the building blocks, if you will, and show leadership, which is what we're doing.
We have a motion and a second on the table, so I'm going to, it's ten to eleven, and we still have another item. So I'm going to close off discussion, let's go for a vote. Do you want to read the motion again, Michelle?
I know, just to continue in the direction that we're going.
With the LRAD system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, three to the motion carries. Okay, item seventeen, discuss and develop...
We're clear, though, that this is not expenditure authorization, it's just, at this point, right?
So if we choose to buy an LRAD, you must come back, another one's...
Yeah.
I think there's enough...
Well, if it's easy authority, sure.
I don't understand. So we're proven to move forward, that, so that doesn't mean purchasing now LRAD?
Well, it sounds like if they go forward, they're going to come, they're going to want to purchase seven, it's an eight hundred thousand dollar thing, I think that's something they would do.
I wouldn't go to seven, I'd go incrementally.
I think you're just talking about the one in East Palo Alto.
Right now, yeah.
All we're talking about at this point, that's what I thought.
I think the motion didn't include any expenditure authorization, it was just to continue with the plan, to put a plan together and so forth.
And it's in our budget, we've actually got it in the district's budget for next year. Not eight hundred thousand, but...
No. Okay.
All right.
Item seventeen, Phil, discuss and develop, point of focus and priorities.
Yeah, we, you know, and Ryan and Jim and Ben, you guys don't need to stick around too long.
Thanks, Jim, thanks, Brian, thanks, Ben. Thanks, Jim, thanks, Brian, thanks, Ben.
Thank you, guys. Good work from all of you.
Thanks.
So, I'm just trying to get to the right page here. Yeah, no, it's not a matter of that, it's a matter of just not having the whole thing fall off the table. Okay, so what I did this, you know, I, I would take, Michelle and I discussed this and, you know, what I tried to do and I, you know, taken some of the comments, we took it a pass for a month, obviously this part wanted to come back, and I simplified, I said just discuss and develop and joint board goals and priorities. You know, a lot of time has passed, there's been different inputs from different board members on different topics that, you know, I think were important to them or the board, or just process and trying to move forward on different things that, you know, people see as it's coming, coming across, you know, EMS was one, but again, I think we knew it was coming, but we didn't know how big it was going to get, how much time it was going to take. So you have things like that. So, you know, we have a bunch of attachments, I've tried to, you know, all of, I don't know if we captured everybody's stuff, but we tried to capture as much as I could. In the report, what others have given me, other board members have given me, and at the beginning, I just included the themes, the first go around with Stu Gary as to, you know, when you guys put up on the board, some of the things have been populated, the themes, I took out everything I did as the chief because I didn't want to convolute it, complicate those discussions, that whose is that, whether you did this with Stu, or what is that, you know, why did you do that? You know, I went back to, this is the board's goals, this is your process, you know, a lot of time has gone by and, you know, and people remember and don't remember what they did. So I said, I'm just going to include everything that I know of that you have brought up in different formats or meetings. Some of it's probably spot on, some of it might be a little bit off of what the board sees as priorities or things that you want staff to work on or you want to see get done this year. And I just tried to simplify it, and it's not simple because there's just a lot of stuff. So, yeah, there's some work in here. You know, if you want to give me, or us, direction tonight and try and come up with a different process, we talked about process, I know that HR is working, HR committee's working on that, that's not quite done yet. Again, you know, I'm just looking for feedback from you to tell me what you want, and maybe it's just a study session again, I'm trying to come up with just basic priorities and simplify this whole thing. And whether it's we put them all up on a board like we've done before and narrow it down, you know, again, I'm, I'm open to whatever the board wants to do, because again, it's your process, and again, we're into, we're into June, really, right now at this point, so.
Any discussion? We can save this for another meeting, or we can spend another.
You probably want to do.
Yeah, that's what, I mean.
Well, and there's a lot to this, right? Because that's why, and again, I tried to throw, I mean, Michelle and I were racking our brains with every email thing we've seen of capturing everything thus far, and there's a lot, there's just a lot. So, you know, in there.
There is a lot, and you know.
What is it, you know what I mean? What is it? What's the list, what's the top priorities? I mean, again, you know, if you want me to do it, do it, you know, but I think really you probably want to do it, so.
Robert?
Help, help me out here. I, I thought that we, our initial discussion of board goals and priorities, at least board goals, that, that there was a list generated and that.
It's right here.
And so that list generated, which is starting on page one ninety-five, we had the themes and we started, and we generated this list, and I think that's what we were going to the board to kind of figure out where it would fit.
Right, and that's what Stu did. So you had that second part after the six themes where it's populated, was the joint consultant, board, work, where he populated the themes with things that you all gave him.
And those areas were emergency services, community safety and preparedness, planning for the future, physical responsibility, and employee, employee relations, and then communication. Those were, I thought, were the general areas where, and what people were saying, hey, look, what about this? And then there was these subsequent lists that got generated from Director Bernstein and Director McLaughlin, and I think, I don't know, Rob threw in some, some, some additional items.
So Rob, Director Solano, he could not, we thought he could not make the meeting, so what he did is he made off of the theme, which isn't, I believe articulated in here, but I believe it was an attachment, since he couldn't make it, he put his own in there and gave them to the consultant, and so we've added it to the list here as well.
Right, and then from what I see, there's another set of, of, I don't know what you'd call it, where is it, Director McLaughlin, East Palo Alto Water, that surface, Director Crowley McLaughlin, McLaughlin from Strategic Planning Committee, space needs assessment.
Which the board did vote on, that's why it got moved to there.
So I'm, I'm just saying, there's a whole, there's this whole third set of listing of, 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 of goals that were, were, were identified. So it, it seems to me, I'm confused now, I, you know, I know there's, anytime we, that we have a discussion on an item, there's always new, new things that kind of focus on and takes our attention and direction to. It's part of something that's existing and it's an addition? So really, to me, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, do we, do we go back to the original areas and, and goals as a starting point, and then feed all these others into these particular areas that we identified, those six different areas? Because I think some of them, look at, some of them fit into those categories. And, and to me, it seemed like they're, those are committee work, work activities? Because, you know, employees' relations, is that, is that HR work? Or a physical responsibility, is that finance work? Planning for the future, is that strategic planning? Community safety and preparedness, is that the e-prep committee? Emergency services, I'm not sure where that fits, maybe we can go into community area. But I think it seemed like, until we can, you know, get, start off with a basis of, a point of, of where these areas that we generated initially would fall, we're going to just keep adding to this list without really understanding who's going to be working on these.
That's the problem.
Activities. And then you got, again, two different set of, of ideas that have been floating up, and so that, that's going to take some more sorting. And whether we need, whether, and what timeline are these activities going to get worked on? And who's going to work on it? Is that committee work or is that staff work? Or a combination of both? So I think we need to sort these, you know, get conclusion on our initial set and then move from there. And so plug these additional items into, into these areas that we call themes.
Chuck?
Robert, I, I don't think it quite went that way, just bring your attention to, if you look on page three here, all these suggestions that originally came up on page three and page four were all prior to work with Stu Gary. These were all things we suggested first, and then on February twelfth, Stu Gary took this and tried to massage it all. And unfortunately, in other words, what came first were the things that you said came second, and that, that actually wasn't the timetable. And I think unfortunately, Stu took us down a bad direction that hurt us. For example, one of the things we decided on at our meeting is that we wanted to talk about the succession planning for the chief's role, and that was really important. And then he changed that recommendation to design a succession planning program through the fire chief level, in other words, including everybody. But that's not what we talked about, we talked about focusing on the fire chief. So in some ways, I think we, we've done a pretty good job of having six, seven, eight goals. And then what Stu said is, board, it's not up to you to be specific about the goal, be very general and let the chief come back to you and tell you what he can reasonably do during this year. And that's where all these goals got watered down, can become meaningless.
Maybe I want to, maybe I want to focus clearer, when we got up here and started talking about, and that's the first set of.
Yeah, but if you look at the date, that's February twelfth, these other things were proposed a month earlier. These were all proposed a month earlier.
These were in January. We had that, that early meeting in January specifically for this, planning, you know, in terms of the.
What I'm saying is, we'd written on the board kind of the way we wrote it, it seemed like we had agreement, and then Stu rewrote them. And once he rewrote them, they were these watered down things that, and Stu was, he was the advocate for these things being measurable and time dependent, you know, the criteria that were so important.
Hold on, Rob, hold on.
Yeah.
Okay, Rob.
I'm still waiting for accreditation report, because part of that has strategic plan there, operationally, okay? And what I would like to do, and I won't speak for myself, because I think Stu came up with pretty good, open-ended strategic goals that he wanted, emergency service, he came up with a generalized list.
Yeah, your six items are good.
Right, and.
Themes.
That's why.
Well, we came up with those.
Yeah.
And he wrote down.
Right, but.
And then it falls apart.
Right, and, and then we come up with this accreditation report that Manny's working on. And I don't know of an organization like California Highway Patrol. Commissioner's Office prepares the strategic plan. The governor doesn't prepare the strategic plan, okay? The highway patrol, the unit or the commander or their planning and research department prepares that. I mean, I, I can go on and on with different agencies that prepare the strategic plan as an operational plan, and their support function measures or reviews or prepares whatever they come up with. And I'm pretty sure that with the six areas that Stu has come up with, that that strategic plan that Manny's working on is going to fall within those six.
Yeah, that's number three, planning for the future.
That's right, right. So what I would like, we keep spinning on this thing, and Chuck, right, you know, we, we did these generalized strategic plan, and then we came up with some specifics, each one of us. But we still don't have the operational end from Manny, which is part of the accreditation, that he's going to prepare for the accreditation as a strategic plan. And I would like to see that document and before we can go any further. I, I think, because what if we say in there that we want to consolidate fire services for the entire county? Let's say that's our, our long-term goal, and that's probably the last thing on your mind, or through accreditation, is to consolidate your fire services with some good fire agencies and some agencies that are in trouble. And we really don't want to do that. But what if we came up with something?
Well, I think it's, 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 there's similarities, but it's not the same thing. I mean, so a lot of these that we're getting, you know, it's like space needs just got moved up, you moved it through.
No, that's not true. No, Harold, the space needs thing was something we voted on as a board, that's why.
No, but that's what I'm saying, that's what I just said, you moved it through. So I, I'm not, look, I'm not going to surprise which one of these space needs is no or any strategic plan, right?
Right.
Now, it may be under an SOC where you have an element of that, but, you know, I use that as an example because you're basically, tonight, we're going to go to RFP, we're going to bring it back, you're going to see our costs and so forth and vendor, but there's other ones in here that you may feel the same way about as well. So I don't want to, I don't want to suppose that what happened in February is where we are in June, but I also wouldn't want to say wait for Manny to give you the strategic plan and not do what you think as a board you want to get done this year either and have like a priority list.
I, I never saw the accreditation piece as the strategic plan, so I, I don't know where that's coming from. But this is a very long list, and it is after eleven, and I've heard from multiple board members that they didn't want this meeting to last that long, but it's a long agenda and everyone had a chance to talk. So I suggest that we focus on this in another meeting. I mean, it's already mid-year, we've gotten a lot of things done this year, I think some people on this board don't even want to have a plan, so, which is unfortunate, and I think that's why we're in a situation like this. So, you know, right now, we've been able to focus on the things that matter to you, like the EMS, JPA.
Well, I mean, to us, because it's the timeline, right?
Meaning, meaning for the fire district, and that's a big concern of yours, right? You know, I, one of the, one thing that, you know, one of the few things that I wanted was to get a, a policy in place to do something to pain down our pension liabilities, which I don't think will happen because we can't come up with priorities. And so, you know, at this point, it's already June, how do y'all want to proceed? We don't have that much work, we don't have that much time left. And that's something that we don't have to answer tonight, but we need to think about it, it's literally June now.
And I did not add on to the very last line, I know it's probably, maybe I should have made a bigger print, but, you know, we just got feedback from Mellow Park and Anthony, so, you know, whole different things. And, you know, I know we're looking at, we're looking at Station Seventy-Seven again, that's work, right? That's, and I think that's a priority, but, you know, these are all things that, that I think you just got to get into a process.
I don't know, I mean, you're right, Harold, so do we stop? If Station Seventy-Seven comes up as an opportunity because it's not on here, do we stop? Because it's not, because we don't have an accreditation plan? I mean.
Well, it comes under number three, planning for the future.
Yeah, but we haven't even adopted these. That's what, that's the problem. So I'm willing to adopt these six themes tonight, I mean, otherwise we have nothing. And that's okay, I think, like I said, I think some board members don't want to have a plan.
So we, you did adopt the theme.
We did.
Oh, we did, oh, okay.
So that's as far, that's why I said, I went back to the beginning, you did do that.
Sorry, that was adopted, and then it wasn't adopted, and then it was adopted.
And I disagree with Director Bernstein, there was more to it than that, and he's right, I tried to put timelines and when stuff, the inputs are coming, you know, and look, it's all valuable, but I would say, yeah, tonight you're not, you don't have the time.
We have to prioritize, and we don't have enough time.
And I think everybody wants to be fresh to do this, because this is a big deal.
Well, I, I personally think it's irrelevant right now, so it's June.
No, it's relevant because.
We have our themes.
But, but the theme though is irrelevant if you don't have anything to put in the themes. And, and right now, the thing that we put in, the stuff that we put in the theme are the priorities, are the, are the areas in which we consider that we want to, that, no, that we want to work on as a board.
We can't agree on that, that's the problem.
But the thing is, we haven't, can't agree because we have, we came to a conclusion on which of the, of the seventy-five items or fifty items that we have individually, we have to prioritize what's important. And, and I think we pulled out of the week, and I'm going to use this expression, we pulled out, we, when, when we did site assessment or the property assessment analysis, was the only thing we have pushed through, which was not part of the original list, maybe it was, but all these other items have not been looked at and addressed. So what I'm saying is that, yeah, we approved the themes, but what goes into the theme, if we don't do nothing else, but at least put all these items that were from Director Bernstein, Director McLaughlin, and yourself, and Rob, and myself, to put them in these theme areas, if we don't do nothing else, we need to put them in there. So we'll see what we got, and then hopefully the committees then start prioritizing.
Okay, so y'all want to do that at the June meeting? That's halfway through the year, the end of our fiscal.
Can I just tell you from a staff perspective?
Yeah.
But if we have a priority list from the board, what we try to do is, we focus, if we, I know you have a number one, number two, number three, then we try to focus our resources on making those things happen, right? From staff reports.
I don't disagree, Harold.
And so forth, but right now, without that, it's, which one do you want me to work?
That's right, and I think that's unfortunately intentional by some of the board.
I, I don't know if it's intentional, it's just.
Well, I've, I've been on this board for eight years and I have seen it come and go.
We just have not gotten to it, I think everybody had good intention before.
Then let's, let's schedule this in June.
It's just that there's way too much conversation going on, longer than it really should be on certain topic areas, and we just run out of time.
So let's just, then, do you want to work, I can work and we, with Michelle and Harold, I can work and we, with Michelle and Harold, we can send out a doodle to schedule this so that we actually, I don't know, make this the only item. Because it's going to take that much time and no one wants to spend time on that. So, you know, y'all don't even want to spend time even discussing the stuff that we had to discuss tonight.
I guess we have, so we went through it, so that's.
Why don't you take something?
Hold on.
Hold on. Okay, I'll hold on.
Sorry, Rob.
No.
Do you have something to say to each other?
I, let me just say, I, I think there was a lot of agreement. I think what we had on the board, there were perhaps six.
That's with these six themes?
No, it had nothing to do with that. There were six or eight or 10 things that we thought were really important. Stu tried to do this sort of big structure and he came up with these areas and then he added a whole bunch of new stuff, which we didn't have.
I have to take, take exception, Chuck. We were sitting ready to, Jim wasn't here, I don't think he was here at the time. We sat right here and spent two hours, maybe three hours going through.
Jim was picture. Jim was here, Rob wasn't here.
Taking pictures, finding pictures, that's what we did.
Oh, you're talking about.
And that's what I'm talking about, whatever.
But we did.
We, we did.
It was your list because you had this long list and most of that stuff that went up there was your list.
That's right. But what, 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 what Stu came back with in terms of a doc, written document was different than what we had up on the board.
I think.
So, I think if we can go back and recover what we had, I think we had a lot of agreement here.
Okay, Rob, sorry.
Let me see if I still have that picture. Because I took the picture when we were putting all this stuff on the board.
I think I gave it to Michelle. Yeah, she has, and I gave it to her.
What is that attachment in here?
No, that was my, that was a different thing that I sent to her. Those were my four things for the finance committee. Okay, so do y'all want to do this in June?
Sure.
Okay. Then I work with, to come up with our priorities for the remaining half of the year. So, let me.
Well, I think more than that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I think we talked in terms of a 12 to 18 month.
I agree.
Horizon.
No, I know, but I mean, in terms of our, in terms of this year, this board's thing, which is what Harold wanted to.
Yeah, I appreciate it in June. But I'm really looking to. I'm a director for lots of them because I don't think you can make it just a six-month thing.
No, I agree.
If you can get to the city of Menlo Park, there's a work plan.
We can't even agree, we can't even agree on when we're going to do. So, let's, let's do this.
Michelle, do you have this? May I go up there and?
Yeah, which one, what is it?
It's the stuff that we wrote in there.
Yeah, I think I gave that to her.
I think she has it.
Okay. So, can we, it is 11:15, guys. And so, let's just, why don't I work with Michelle and Harold and we'll get something scheduled in June?
And, and can I add one more thing? If there's anything else, I mean, now's the time to throw it in there before we have a meeting, so.
Okay. Okay, so, I've been, so expect an email from Michelle in terms of dates, date options. Okay, but let's go to 18.
Can I suggest a weekend, maybe, or a morning, so everybody's fresh and.
Do y'all have time for the weekend?
Well, I mean, we could, I just think, I'm thinking in these spaces of time.
I never had ever had this much problem scheduling something for us, getting priorities set. Okay. Number 18, reports and requests, Chuck? And liaison committee, sorry.
Oh, wait, what did I miss?
Nothing, I'm going to work with you to schedule a date so that we can, and probably a weekend where we can actually focus on this priority setting only.
Does that move forward?
Sometime you're going to work together to do a doodle.
Okay.
Chuck, reports, requests, liaison committee.
Okay, I, in terms of, well, the finance committee, you'll report on.
No, you can.
Okay, well, the finance committee, I think all the main issues that we discussed were actually on this agenda, so I don't have anything in addition. Somehow I feel we've already reported on our meeting with Menlo Park prior meeting.
I think so.
We talked, we had a good meeting with, with Menlo Park and they seemed very willing to cooperate on virtually every issue that we're talking about, including the sale of, of property and so forth.
Which is part of our core.
In terms of my own personal stuff, I, I I worked the fair, the, what do you call it? The Bellhaven Community Fair, had a CERT group there. Got lots of people interested in courses about somewhere between almost 40 different names and so forth, email addresses. So, they were, they were very interested. After that, I, I went over to, the Mormon Church had another safety fair specifically on safety issues. And that was a very well-attended and well-organized fair also. And then last weekend, I worked the, not last weekend, the weekend before last, I worked at the Cinco de Mayo Fair in East Palo Alto, which was an incredible zoo. There was lots of activity and fun and so forth, really noisy though. And I kind of reached my limit of mariachi music after about six hours. They had two band stands, so they had two different mariachi bands going at the same time. But again, we got some more names there. And I hope Robert will report on this, but I, I think the East Palo Alto CERT group continues to make progress and develop and they've been having some very good meetings and getting well-organized. And I'm, what's interesting about that group is, we call it the East Palo Alto Group, but the majority of the people that were there were either from the county or from Menlo Park. So, it's really an amalgam of a couple of areas. And I think we have the roots to be developing a Menlo Park group and a, oh, what's, what's that part of Menlo Park called? I mean, unincorporated down.
Oh, the Avenue.
Far Oaks.
Far Oaks, thank you. Yeah, the Far Oaks neighborhood. And also right near Menlo Attleton High School there, the Vintage Oaks area.
Right.
So, all that's very positive. I mean, I'm really trying to make sure that we do, that we encourage the growth of CERT. I, I know that Robert's working on it on the, on the committee, the emergency preparedness committee. I think it's important that we get that resolved, what the direction is going to be and how we're going to proceed with that. But, but really for the sake of residents, we need an active volunteer group going on. So, that's, that constitutes my report.
Thanks, Robert.
The two committees, first is the human resource committee. Committee members, myself and Jim, we met on May 7th at 3 o'clock in the conference room at 1:00 70 in Middlefield. And in attendance with myself, Jim, Michelle and Chief Harold. Committee objectives, I think everyone understands, but if not, I will reiterate. And that objective is to consider and discuss establishing a policy on board interaction and rules of engagement. The committee also will examine the board directions, policy and procedures manual. And which has the standing committees, which we all know about. And something that I think what we accomplished, and Jim helped me out here on this part of it, is that we looked at and reviewed, as well as provide discussion, on other agencies' descriptions of their standing committee. And we also, with Michelle's help and help pulling that information up, we still have some more work to do in that area. We also, committee members were forwarded, Jim and myself forwarded to the clerk of the board, conflicting sections regarding the committee's work from the board policy and procedure manual. We had extensive discussion around those, looked at those areas that we thought might be of conflict with each other. And some of the assignments were that conclusion that we came to, I came to work on between now and the next meeting, was that each committee member, which is myself and Jim, have been assigned to draft a, a rewrite of a section of the board policy of one of the conflicting areas. And once the section have been edited and drafted, we will then be, I think, at a position to be able to come to the board with what we think should be some revisions, some language change within the, within the policy. So, I think that's where we are. Jim, you have.
Yeah, I think it's, it's somewhere in there, but.
Yeah, so regarding the ePrep committee, we still haven't, we haven't met because of the fact, one of the areas that we, that was, was advised and to try to hold off on the meeting was to wait till the CPM advisory board, you know, have their, their, the subcommittee meeting who, who were put together, ad hoc committee were put together to look at whether we should go, whether they should go through independently as a 501(c)(3) or maintain their current status. And talking with, seeing the minutes from their last board meeting, it indicated that the, the committee was looking, looking for legal counsel to help them understand whether they should, the pros and cons of becoming a 501(c)(3). And also that they, they wanted to engage some conversation with the board, this board, regarding the expectation level of this commitment to becoming independent 501(c)(3). So, some of the things that are happening, coming up with them is their drill. They have the drill in Menlo Park on the 22nd of June. And that they have a Victoria Manor 10th Annual Neighborhood Drill on June, June the 2nd. So, I think for, for us, for the ePrep committee, I know Rob is asking about having a meeting and I'm wondering whether, if, if we should have one this month, only because we, first of June, that first week, we're going to have a meeting. And hopefully by then, and talk to Sean, they would have, their board or their committee, ad hoc committee would be, would have a recommendation to the full board about which direction they want to take. But I think we need to try to figure out, they, somehow they want to have a meeting with the board of directors and I'm not sure how we get them feedback as to what we think as a board, what level of support they would have as that independent 501(c)(3). So, that's where I am at this point.
Rob?
No, I think my conversations that I've had with Sean Mallard, who's now their new, what do you call him? President or chairman or?
President.
President, that they're looking into doing the nonprofit, but they don't. We don't get, since we're getting towards, you know, preparing some type of funding, do they really need any funding or, you know, are we going to be the sole source of them even, even if they do become a nonprofit? Just a bunch of questions that I just think we need to throw on the table and get resolved. You know, they could be talking to a lawyer for three years by the time we get their nonprofit set up. And if we have to provide them with the financial resources as not being a nonprofit, you know, it's a decision the board has to make and there's already money set aside anyway for CERT, isn't there Kathy?
For what?
For CERT.
There is some money set aside.
Yeah, so, you know, there's money already set aside, but they just need to tell us what they need. And I don't think, we know that yet, do we, Robert?
Well, I think the budget is set for X amount of dollars. Beyond that, I think if they could become, from what I understand, if they become a nonprofit, they not only get the streaming funds that currently you have for the, from the district, but they also have an opportunity to get other grants to add from other sources like foundations or even, even they have some funds they can go after.
I agree with that, if they can get other funding sites, but gosh, you know, they've been spinning like this for a few months. They try to set. Well, on April 18th, of course, we attended the, the alert system at Station 2 and it was all done, chief, great job on that. On April 30th, I attended the Atherton Police Department Town Meeting and it went pretty well. I mean, the first one I heard didn't go so well, but the second one went pretty well. And it was very informative to the residents of what to do, what not to do relative to burglaries and prevention and how to report things. And they talked about cameras that they may set up with, as part of the new civic center that they're going to build. And on May 1st, they had the San Mateo County, the law enforcement memorial ceremony at the San Mateo County Historical Library, I attended that. On May 11th, the Jasper Ridge Farm has a yearly function. What they do is they provide animals to individuals that, that need support relative to certain problems like veterans and counseling, things like that. And I attended that and that was very, just the way they store the animals and stuff, it's, it's pretty amazing. And the facility is huge. I mean, they've got acres there. It's right on the other side of the highway off, off San Hill Road. And I went to the Menlo Park Police Open House. And that was interesting to see the police department and all the stuff that they do. They were very complimentary of you, chief.
Oh, great. I can hear that.
And Monday, on the 12th, I attended the memorial service for Officer Doran, who was a Hillsborough police officer that was killed in the 20s. And if you go off 280, the bridge deer was named after him. And they had set up a placard there, I'm a member of the hunter club. And we had put a placard stone there at the entranceway. So, that's all, thank you.
Thanks. Ken?
I attended the Shake Alert demonstration, very impressive technology. The, attended the strategic planning committee meeting and the HR committee meeting, which have already been described. I met with Virginia and Harold and Melanie who discussed JPA issues last week. And I will be attending the JPA meeting tomorrow night to represent the board and vote in the affirmative for the, the agreement.
And Melanie's actually would like to go too, that's our, she wants to see how that part works.
Just ask about, there's another, tomorrow night's also a meeting.
For Station 4.
Yeah, I was going to just mention that, yeah, which I'm going to be going to.
So, that's all.
Okay, so let me just go through mine quickly. I attended the Menlo Park Easter egg hunt, where, where our guys were there. They were.
Which one?
The one in Menlo Park.
Okay.
I couldn't go to the Atherton one. I went to the liaison meetings with Atherton and, with their liaisons with Harold and Jim and the Menlo Park liaison Chuck and Harold. And they were both, I thought, very good meetings. I attended the groundbreaking for the new Atherton Town Center and the library. I did, I also attended the Shake Alert demo at Station 2, which was great, I thought, and very useful. And I attended both, well, I think both of the Atherton meetings with the Atherton Police and I saw Robert the second one. But I wanted to just say one quick thing to you, Harold. Thank you and Michelle, Melanie for doing a great job with the JPA thing and working with the other fire chiefs. It was, it was a tough road and I think that you're right, this was a big deal for us to shed light on it. And I'm glad that at least we got to that part.
And we're not done.
I know, but I mean, I know, it's still more of an uphill battle, but at least we got something.
Well, it's actually between agencies and all the way, so.
And I want to thank Jim for being very patient about doing this whole process.
I've learned a lot.
I'd give him a brain dump on things. We've had several meetings about just the history and the political side of this, so thank you. And I'll be at Station 4 tomorrow.
And I'll be at Station 4 tomorrow. And that's all I have, so I'll open it up to public comment number two. And there isn't public comment. So I'll quote public comment number two. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
A second? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
The meeting is adjourned at 11:33. Thank you.
Don't they know what happened with the Warriors?